Tony, could you please call Raul?
Jimenez.
President.
Paralas. Cohen.
Yeah.
Carrasco.
Sorry, Raul's here as well. Apologize.
Thank you. Carrasco. Davis.
Here.
Esparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Liccardo.
President.
You have a court.
Okay, as is directed by, I believe, the Rules Committee, we are going to interrupt our current schedule to jump in to item 3.3. San Jose Water Company's proposed rate increases currently being considered by the California Public Utilities Commission. I'll remind all the members of the public who may want to weigh in on this, this is not a decision of the councils to make. This is a decision of the Public Utilities Commission, excuse me, the Public Utilities Commission. And we are simply seeking information and appreciate the executives from the San Jose Water Company coming to respond to our questions to allow us to understand better what exactly is going on and to help us determine what position, if any, the city might take in the upcoming rate case. So with that, I wanted to proceed, I believe. Now, Dave, should I be going to carry on this or?
You know, Mayor, I don't think Kerry had a presentation. I think it's staff. We're going to be just available for any questions that come up.
Very well. Okay, I do see that the CEO of San Jose Water Company, Eric Thornburg, is here. Thank you for joining us, Eric. Did you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. We really appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and share with you some information on San Jose Water's general rate case so that you and and our customers can learn more about it and what some of the drivers are. And happy to field any questions that you have as we go along or afterwards. I also want to recognize the work of the Public Advocates Office, who I believe is also here tonight to present some information. We view this as a great opportunity to hear from you and our customers. In addition to myself, John Tang, our Vice President of Regulatory and Government Affairs is here and he will be presenting specific information on the filing. And I'm also pleased to be joined by Andy Gier, the President and Chief Operating Officer of San Jose Water, and Jake Walsh, our Assistant Chief Engineer, who has detailed and in-depth knowledge about the infrastructure program. It is one of the major drivers of our rate request. There's no doubt that the last 12 months have been a really challenging time for all of us, our customers and the mutual constituents we serve. We've been working daily to help our customers and support the community. You know, San Jose Water Company has been part of for 154 years. And despite those challenges, we remain committed to delivering on that public health mission that is at the core of what we do. And in no time has the delivery of safe and reliable drinking water and service been more important than during these this past year. So, Mayor, we stand ready to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thornburg. Before we we jump into your presentation, let's ask Mr. Dewadi from the Public Advocates Office, I understand you may be with us as well, is that right? Makunda Dewadi, or perhaps Angela Worth?
King.
Ting Pong Yuen?
Yeah. Yes, I'm here.
Oh, hi, Ting Pong. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yeah.
Forgive me. Did you also have a presentation after San Jose Water Company's?
Yes, I do.
Wonderful. Then we'll proceed right to you after we hear from the company first. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, public staff, Public Advocates Office and customers. I'm going to share my screen with you now. So we can do this right. And of course, when I try to share my screen, I don't see. There we go. So I hope I hope everyone can see that. So as many of you know, we you know us as your as your water utility. And I think the conversation surrounding San Jose Water over these past five years have really centered on droughts and rates. And our roots run much deeper than that and spans over 154 years, as Eric mentioned. And over that time, our core values have not changed. We are committed to delivering on our public health mission, making your rate dollars stretch as far as possible without jeopardizing safety or reliability, protecting the environment, since water touches almost everything that is important to us, and supporting the communities where we live, work, and serve. We recognize that there are many customers who are impacted by the pandemic. Our customer assistance programs are geared towards helping them manage their consumption and ultimately their bills. We also have a special low-income program for customers who qualify. As part of our commitment to supporting the local community, we are increasing our support of the nonprofit organizations in serving our service area. We're encouraging our employee to volunteer in their own backyards through our employee-led 501(c)(3) Foundation. We're supporting the local economy through our supply diversity program, which seeks to include diverse business enterprises into our supply chain. I'm proud to report that in 2020, almost 30% or about $30 million of our spend involved these diverse business enterprises. So we have recently updated our request as required by the PUC. It's called a 45-day update after we filed on January 1st. And based on the update, the impacts are noticeably reduced from our initial application. The 2022 increase is proposed at 9.36%, and this is inclusive of surcharges and fees, some of which are temporary. The key rate the key rate drivers are shown here. It's really related to infrastructure, which I'm going to talk a lot more about here in a little bit. O and M, costs, taxes, depreciation, and water charges. The infograph that you see there shows how every dollar we collect from our customers is broken down. Almost half of it, or about 45 cents of every dollar, goes to pay for water charges and taxes, both of which are really beyond our control. So we talked a little bit about infrastructure. This is a this is an issue that is impacting water utilities nationwide. San Jose Water Company is certainly not immune to it, and we are proposing to replace water mains, tanks, and other infrastructure to reliably serve our customers. San Jose, the city of San Jose, is by far the biggest portion of our service area. And 72 miles of the water mains propose for replacement. 46 of those 72 miles, or 64%, is within the city limits. I understand that rate proposals are never popular and that these are difficult conversations that we are having. However, I and I think the company would rather have these conversations with you where we can share information on how we are looking to deliver on our public health mission and serve the next generation than to have the conversations that Jackson, Mississippi, and other rural American communities are having about the consequences of not doing enough to deliver on theirs. One of the biggest projects that we have going on right now is our Columbine tank replacement. This is a project that is in the near the east foothills of San Jose off of Prethers Road. And we are replacing this earth embankment reservoir, which is the picture you see there on the bottom right, with two tanks to reliably serve the next generation. You can see the footprint of those two tanks being being graded right now. This infographic here comes from our award-winning Enterprise Asset Management Plan. This this asset management plan was actually proposed with our general rate case application. Makunda and others from his from his team are looking at this right now very closely. And the plan really provides a roadmap for where we should be focusing our investments in the coming years. Any category that shows an image other than a full moon or a full circle points to an area points to areas where we still have some work to do to ensure that we can ensure that we can deliver safe and reliable water service for our customers. This this includes our tanks and reservoirs, groundwater supply, and water mains. So one of the most maybe ubiquitous questions I get asked and we get asked is, you know, why are your rates higher than other utilities? And I think before I speak to the chart this chart, and I've spoken with several of you about this, please know that these charts that I'm about to show you are not very meaningful. Every utility will have different needs depending on their age, size, and condition of their water system. In fact, I really don't like to present rate or bill comparisons like this because it's unfair for me to weigh in on how any peer utility is delivering on their mission simply by looking at a bill comparison. And, you know, doing so has actually been perceived as calling out a peer. So just for, you know, full disclosure, I'm in no way doing that and presenting information that has been sought by customers. And actually, this information comes courtesy of the city of San Jose. This was in your report last year to the council from in the Environmental Services Group when you were looking at the rate-setting process for the municipal water system here. So as you can see, San Jose Water Company does not have the highest bill. We don't have the lowest bill either. And really, when you look at the top five utilities, I think there's one thing that they all share, and that is they are served by the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, who provides water supply to them. And the SFPUC recently completed a $4.5 billion capital program to shore up their water supply and infrastructure needs for the next for the next generation. So to be fair, let's compare one that's lower. Let's talk about Great Oaks Water Company. They're right at the bottom there. Why? Why are they? Why are they lower? And I think a big part of the answer in that is because Great Oaks enjoys wholesale water rates from Valley Water. That is 1/3 of what the city of San Jose and San Jose Water Company pays. They pump water from the Southern Basin because their service area covers the Southern Basin, and then they they provide that to their customers, and that price of water is 1/3 what we both pay for the Northern Basin up here. Similar to the SFPUC, San Jose Water Company has really been focused on replacing, you know, our infrastructure over the last last 10 years. We spent over $1 billion over that period. We also know that looking ahead a little bit, we still have some needs that need to be dealt with. There are increasingly stringent water quality requirements, and we will have to deal with a forever chemical known as PFAS and PFAS in the near future. We have found these chemicals in some of our wells, not many, but we have found them in some of our wells. And our customers' sentiments are clear. They do not want to be served water with any level of this chemical, no matter what level is deemed to be safe by the EPA or the state's Division of Drinking Water. So here is another slide that I will speak to a little bit. This shows how we compare to other utilities here in the area. And it the data comes from the comprehensive annual financial reports from some of these organizations. To ensure more apples-to-apples comparison, adjusted OpEx is defined as a total operating expenses minus water supply costs, depreciation expense, taxes, and other income. For the municipal water utilities, you would not expect to see any taxes, and so they're assumed to be to be zero. So the bar the bar chart on the left provides for operations expenses in 2015 and 2020. The chart on the right shows what the average year-over-year growth is in that same period. We did look for San Jose Municipal Water Systems data, but we could not replicate that from the city's CAFR report. So we we left that out. I think one of the conclusions that maybe you can draw from this is that San Jose Water Company is an efficient operator. I I'm not going to draw a comparison between our peers because it's the largest utility. I think you would expect some scale and some efficiency, and I think those characteristics are reflected here. This slide does not mean that, nor am I concluding, that our peers in Palo Alto, Mountain View, the pages in Sunnyvale are inefficient utilities by any means.
John, can we interrupt you for just a moment? It looks as though it's not on full screen. Is it possible? It means everybody can read it a little more easily.
I'm sorry. Let me do that.
Thank you.
Is that better? I'm sorry. I can obviously provide you a copy of this as well, Mayor and council members afterwards. So.
Yeah, the slides you might be even better, but that's okay. At least that's a little better.
Okay, so 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 this is my last slide. One of the questions we were asked was, what other rate impacts do you anticipate in 2020? And maybe, I'm sorry, 2021, I'm a year behind, 2021 and maybe beyond. So Valley Water, as you know, I attended a meeting the other day. Valley Water is looking at a at a 9.6% increase for their wholesale water cost, which will raise, which will result in a 3.3 and 1/2% pass-through for us come July 1st. If they if that is ultimately the the action they're going to take, we have a couple of advice letter projects that are smaller. It's going to be less than 1/2% increase for both of them combined. We're finishing those up. These were previously approved projects that were that we're finishing up. We have our smart meter application that is in process right now. The Public Advocates Office is looking at that very closely, just as they are with our GRC. And the bulk of that spending is really going to happen over the first four years as we look to deploy the smart meter infrastructure throughout our service area. And the rate impact based on the application that we filed is less than 1% annual increase over the first four years of deployment. And then come May of this year, in about six weeks, five weeks, we are going to submit our cost of capital application with the Public Utilities Commission. We did ask for deferment of another year, given everything else that was going on. The PUC thought that it was good for us to go in this year with that application. So we will be filing that application on May 1st or the first business day after May 1st in 2021. And that will be a another notice to our customers. And those and this increase will be not be effective until 2022. So that really concludes concludes my slides. I'd like to hand it off to Andy for some closing remarks.
Thank you, John, and thank Mayor and council members for the opportunity to be here and speak with you today. We really appreciate the importance of this issue to you and to your constituents. It's also important to us as we grapple with the daily challenge of delivering safe and reliable water service in the face of the pandemic as well as other disasters that we've been through recently, such as wildfires, floods, public safety, power shutdowns, and so forth. You know, I'm really proud to report that our water system has performed exceptionally well throughout these. As a result of our $1 billion in system improvements made over the past decade, where we've replaced wells, tanks, generators, water mains. The need for infrastructure improvements is impacting the entire industry. The US EPA and the American Water Works Association, along with the American Society of Civil Engineers, all speak at length about these challenges. San Jose Water is not immune to them, and we're working to address these challenges through our filings with the California Public Utilities Commission. There's ample evidence of the harm caused by deferred maintenance and the tremendous collective risks that we all face due to the failure to invest in improving our infrastructure and utilities. Know this is a really difficult time and absolutely will continue to support our customers, communities where we work, live, and serve. We also remain committed to delivering on the public health mission to deliver safe and reliable water service to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate that you don't have to be here. You came at our invitation. And I appreciate your willingness to share information and respond to our questions. And from the Repair Advocates Office is Ting Pong Yuen Ting Pong. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Liccardo, Vice Mayor Jones, City Council members and members of the public. My name is Ting Pong Yuen, and I'm here tonight representing the Public Advocates Office at the California Public Utilities Commission. The Public Advocates Office is an independent organization within the California Public Utilities Commission. Our statutory mission is to obtain the lowest possible utility rates for customers consistent with safe, reliable service and the state's environmental goals. We also strive to ensure that no one is left behind and that all communities have access to safe and affordable electric, gas, water, and communications utility services. I'm the lead coordinator in the current San Jose Water Company General Rate Case. And with me tonight is Makunda Dewadi, the oversight supervisor of the case. Our team is in the process now of reviewing and the of the general rate case application to determine the fair, just, and reasonable expenses and water rates paid by the San Jose customers. Once we our analysis and recommendations are finalized, a public report will be available for you to review our recommendations. Subject to the commission's finalizing the schedule for the proceeding, we anticipate to file our public report sometime in mid-May and post it on the commission's website. And I'm very pleased so many of you are participating and attending this meeting tonight. Your presence here is very significant to us, and we are looking forward to listening to your comments and concerns. With that said, I want to emphasize now that this is your meeting to learn your voice and opinions and raise your concerns. We are very interested to hear your views and thoughts on the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ting Pong. And thanks to members of your team for being here as well. And I understand Jeff Prozahn is with us. Jeff, did you want to offer any information before we go to the public? Okay, I think Jeff may not be with us, so we'll get him on soon. Let's go to the members of the committee who'd like to speak, Mr. Friedman. This is public comment on San Jose Water Company rate case.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. Blair Beakman here. Boy, I'm learning hopefully how to better talk about this subject. Thank you for these reports and that you'll have a final public report in May. You know, I've been looking into and working with local East Bay community energy practices the past year, and they developed a really incredible subsidy plan to basically have 100, almost 100% renewables in their energy portfolio. You know, that that, you know, can help both low-income and and high-income people. And they use a subsidy plan that low-income people do not have to pay, you know, fees. They don't have to pay rate increases to get to the 100% level of renewable energy use. And it's been a fairly good system. It's the question of do you want to trust the subsidy process? And that's the big question San Jose has to ask themselves at this time with not just water, with garbage and with their own electricity future. So, you know, good luck in how you're going to talk about this in the future. And good luck in what I've been learning is having good accounting books at this time. Can is your ledgers in good shape at this time? If that's the case, then maybe we don't have to go into a subsidy plan. But if we do, go do it with full love, you know, and really give full, you know, forgiveness, basically, to low-income people. So they don't have to have any sort of rate increase in the future. That should be the goal. No rate increases at all during this very difficult time we're in for low-income people and have high-income people who are doing fairly okay. They can pay a higher price, and that seems to be the the understanding. And it's yourselves to learn how to talk about that with us and make it an open subject, and none of us fear talking about it. And we all.
Thank you. The person with the phone number ending 8601, welcome. The person with the phone number 8601, if you could, please dial, leave it star 6 or asterisk 6, unmute you. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First, I just want to say thank you for opening up this meeting to the public. My name is Lisa Ann Huber, and I'm also with a nonprofit organization called Agape Silicon Valley. We distribute food and basic necessities biweekly.
This is on the San Jose Water rate case, ma'am. We'll be taking up the homeless encampment item next.
My apologies. Absolutely.
No problem. Okay. Given the fact that we do have a very substantial schedule to get through before midnight tonight, I'm going to ask all of our public speakers to limit themselves to one minute so we can make sure we can get to all the public speakers I know who want to speak on the subsequent items as well. The person with the phone number ending 5140.
You know, the definition of usury is charging somebody 10%. Goes back goes way back. And that's what you guys are doing with this water company, 10%. That is, it's criminal. It's criminal what you guys are doing. And I don't understand, I mean, you you gave this nice speech about everything, about your your values. Is values 10 charging someone 10% more? You know, I knew a man who passed away not long ago. You know what he did before he left for the hospital? He had to turn his water off because he thought he thought something that you guys were overcharging him, which ended up happening. San Jose Water made him a billing error, and people had to go to court to fight that. And keep in mind that your garbage and your water is hidden in the property taxes. Everyone listening should know this. And what you people are doing is criminal. You know what? The mafia.
Thank you. Anne Chum. Welcome.
Hello. In your presentation, the water presentation, you said that you might you're looking at adding automatic meters. I just wanted to say, I think that, or I was wondering how much that would be. It seems like it would be expensive. So yeah, I hope that you guys don't add the automatic meters. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Tim McRae.
Thank you, Mayor Liccardo and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, where I am the Vice President for Energy and Environment. We represent over 370 member companies in Silicon Valley. San Jose Water's application promotes water supply reliability and infrastructure modernization. The company has delivered safe, high-quality, and reliable water service to the valley since 1866. Today, San Jose Water is responsible for more than 2,400 miles of pipes and other critical water infrastructure, much of which was constructed over 50 years ago. More than $1 billion in system improvements have been so far been spent in the last decade, and additional investments require increases in water rates to help pay for continued system improvements. The Leadership Group supports the San Jose Water's efforts to continue delivery of safe, high-quality, and reliable water service to Santa Clara Valley residents. And we have confidence in the CPUC's thorough review process in setting water rates that are just and reasonable while ensuring safe and reliable infrastructure.
Thank you. Paul Edwards.
Yeah, I was just wondering, when was the last rate hike? And what what did that cover? What was that for? And after the 10% rate hike that you're proposing, where will that put us on the scale as compared to like San Francisco and some of the other providers that you had in your graph?
Thank you, Paul. We'll take those questions up when we return. Paige D. Paige, your device appears to be muted right now.
Yeah, no, actually, sorry. I wasn't given the option yet, but thank you. Yeah, I I missed a part of this. I had to log off. I'm not sure if the water increases are for everybody in San Jose. But I'd like to strongly urge that this be limited to those who have a wide use of water. I live in an apartment. I don't have any vegetation, you know, no lawn. And we're we're really cutting it close as far as, you know, living day to day as it is. And so if you could please, you know, any rate increases should only be subject to those who are using a lot of water. But I also believe that the rate increases just should not happen during a pandemic regardless. So thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Pat K. Welcome, Pat.
That was Pat K.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity. And this is Pat Kearns, and hello, John and Eric Thornburg. I was wanting to compare the your AMI automatic meters with this rate increase. And, you know, you gave a lot of information in new terms, and I'm fairly informed about it. And I didn't recognize a lot of it. It came too fast. But you did mention about a 1% increase for your automatic meters. And the way I look at it in your filings, it looks like it's 96 million for the automatic meters and 87 million for this GRC. And that's a three-year and four-year difference, but they average out to 29 million per year. So I'd like you to explain where the 1% comes from and if you'd be willing to have a forensic audit. So I'd like you to explain where the 1% comes from and if you'd be willing to have a forensic audit.
Thank you, Pat. And, and John, I'll ask if you'd be willing to respond to any of these questions when we come back. Greg Olson.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. Thank you for letting us speak. A couple of different things. First of all, the question would be to San Jose Water is you don't absorb any of the cost of the 20% of the people in San Jose that aren't paying their bills. So you talk about these programs as, as you guys having this outreach. I'm not sure that that's actually the case. I think San Jose is paying the cost of those 20% of the people that aren't paying their bills. Second thing is, is you didn't talk about any of your operations outside of the state that you're subsidizing with San Jose money, including operations in Connecticut and Texas. And third thing is, I don't understand how a smart meter should be something we should pay for when it's a cost efficiency for you. And why is that continuing to be burned down the taxpayer on the, the rate pair? So if you could talk especially about where the money is going outside of the state, you didn't seem to bring that up at all. And you are a public corporation. And if those people that don't know that, this is a publicly traded company on the New York Stock Exchange. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Paul Edwards. Sir, your device appears to be muted.
Yeah, no, sorry. I was just clicking that. I just wanted to agree with the last individual with regards to the smart meters, however, because that is a cost efficiency and it should cost them less to check our meters than not to pay people to go out. Why are we footing the bill for that?
Thank you, sir. All right. I believe that concludes public comments. So let's come back to council for questions and discussion. Mr. Tang, would, would you be willing to take on any of those questions that were raised during the public discussion?
Um, yeah, sure. Definitely.
You want me to run down them? I, I know that one of the questions that came out very clearly was about the smart meters. Clearly, there is an application, I think it was in 2019, to increase rates to pay for the smart or the AMI, I believe is referred to. And if they provide cost efficiencies for you, why is that going to the right rate pairs? I think obviously the assumption is that there's some cost efficiency for you.
Um, well, you know, it's like, I could take down the question because what happened is I didn't participate in that proceeding. It's a separate proceeding. At this point, um, we are waiting for the decision to come out. So I'm not sure what is going to be the final outcome at this point. And I don't want to guess exactly what happened. So.
My, my question was actually for John Tang. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I tried. Forgive me. I was trying to understand why noise was coming out of John's, John's face and his mouth wasn't moving. It was incredible.
Sure, sorry.
No, no problem.
That, thank you, Mayor. I was going to interrupt, but I figured.
Respond to that question?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. I was going to interrupt. I figure I better not. Just culturally, that's, that's what I was taught. So, Ting, thank you for, thank you for helping me out there. So, so the AMI meters, as we propose them, it's really a, it's really a project that was very well vetted through a business plan that we prepared. And essentially, a business plan has a cost benefit analysis. So the driving force of that application is really the water use standards that are going to be coming into effect on January 1st, 2025. As you know, the state water board has set water use limits both indoor, well, right now it's just indoor, but they will be setting water use limits for outdoor too. And so all the utilities, including the municipal water system, are going to be looking at, you know, establishing water budgets for all of their customers to do this. In order for us to provide our customers with the data that they need so that they can make good decisions about their consumption. And this is, by the way, this is one of the biggest, I think, criticisms we had during the last round where, you know, we had water budgets, but there was really no way for customers to get daily reads of their meters so that they can figure out what their consumption is, how, how much they were going, you know, towards the, the budget that they, they were allocated. So the business plan for this AMI case really rests on what it would cost us if we didn't have AMI. If we were to provide the customers the same data that AMI would provide, you know, based on, you know, manual meter reading, which is currently what we have. And so that analysis was submitted to the Public Advocates Office. They are currently reviewing it right now, as Ting said. And, and we found our, our conclusion is that there was a lot of benefit, savings from that. And the savings is going to come from avoided costs for, you know, the meter reading, the additional meter reading, other expenses that we would have to do to make sure that customers have the same information that AMI would, would provide. So that's really what we're talking about in terms of that application, the rate impacts, as I mentioned. And, and I'm sorry, I went through my application very fast. I know we only had my presentation very fast. We only had 10 minutes from what I understand from your staff. The application that we submitted showed about a, about a 1%, less than 1% increase over the four years based on the savings that we would incur from, from the implementation of AMI. So it's really a cost benefit analysis that we, that we went through with that application.
John, am I mistaken in believing that in 2019, you submitted an application for a 7% increase every year for five years for advanced metering infrastructure? Is that, is that wrong?
Mayor, I, I don't believe that was the case. That's not, that's not the information that I have.
All right. Jeff Provenza, are you on the?
Yes, I am, if you can hear me now.
Jeff, am I mistaken? Because I'm, I'm reading some information that was provided from, from environmental service.
Yeah, that's the case. So the, John, I'm sorry, Mayor, Jeff Provenza, Deputy Director, ESD. So the information mayor that was provided to you was from their business case. I talked about the increase in cost. I believe what John is saying is that in looking at an analysis of, to get to that level of service, whether to do it by, by, by person or by technology, it's actually cheaper to implement the technology, but it is still an increase in cost over what, what they're doing now. John, can you maybe add some context to that? Right? For AMI, is it an increase in cost over where you are now?
Yes, that's correct. And let me, let me pull up something. I'll, I'll show you the application and this is obviously on the PUC's website as well.
Going at the end of this is really what is the impact on the rate payer? You're saying it's less than 1% this year.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me pull that up.
It's not anywhere near the 7% that we may have believed.
Let me, let me pull that up.
Sorry, I think they were, we may be talking about two separate things here. So, John.
I understand the distinction.
Give me just a second. I'll pull this up.
Okay. Well, you're, Jeff, do you want to explain what the 7% is about?
Sure, you know, and I can try to bring up some of my information too. And it was in their business case, they talked about the, the additional cost, increase the additional revenue. That would be the additional cost and the revenue that would be associated with that cost. I believe what John is saying is that in order to up the level of service by what they're doing now, it would cost more money than if they did AMI. So they're looking at, I think, what John's case, and he was advocating. And I do agree on, on the state standards and the, the benefits of adding more knowledge into customers' hands. There is a cost increase coming. I think John's case was that it's cheap, it's a lesser of a cost increase to do the technology than it is to add in more manual labor. So, so Mayor, if I can weigh in here, I'm sharing my screen with everybody. I hope it's bigger this time. I've learned my lesson. Thank you.
Yeah.
And so this is from page 19 of our application, 191202. And you can see the language right here in part B of what the proposed revenue requirement increases for 2021, 22, 23 and 24. Obviously, the decision is, is not in hand yet. And so we filed this, you know, obviously in 2019, so about a year and a half ago. It's taking longer to process, just like everything else is understandably because of COVID, but this is the, this is what's in our application. And that's where I got the kind of the less than 1% on average over the next four years.
Okay. Then secondly, I could just to build on that, based on what you did present, John, it, it sounds as though we can anticipate an aggregate increase on average of about 14% this year. If we were to include the nine points, almost 9.4% in your rate case, plus what you anticipate, roughly three and a half to account for Valley Water's wholesale increase, plus these smaller increases related to advanced metering infrastructure and the other two projects. And we're right in believing it's somewhere around 14% this year.
Mayor, I think, I think that is accurate. If, if the public advocates will obviously allow us authorize all of the investments and all of the expenses that we have proposed. They are obviously looking at that right now very closely. And it is very likely that they will disallow some expenses. It will very, be very likely that they will disallow some capital projects. In which case that 9.76% or the 9% that we, that we had put in the slide deck is really the ceiling. It will likely be lower than that. And I don't want to get ahead of their process, but that's, that's what we're looking at.
Right. Okay. And then in addition, you have a 2021 application for cost of capital. And that increase would take hold in 2022? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. It will take effect on January 1st, 2022, if it stays on schedule. Yes.
So if, if we go back to the slide that you showed at the very beginning where you showed that, I think it was a dollar bill of different portions of the, the cost. And capital was already included in the rate case, as I understood, some amount of capital infrastructure. But at the same time, under the PUC rules, my understanding is you, every three years, go get a cost of capital rate adjustment. I'm not sure what exactly the technical term is, but you get to increase the rate for the cost of capital. Are we double counting? Why, why?
Yeah.
Cost of capital is a part of your rate case. How do you get money for it also independently of that?
Yeah. So, so that's, that's a very good question. So at the CPUC, the cost of capital and the rate case, the general rate case are two different proceedings. It just so happens that this year, because of the one year deferment that we got, it is going to be, is going to be concurrently processed this year. So there'll be two applications this year, one in January for a GRC and one for the cost of capital. They are independent, but certainly, certainly related. We have a cost of capital now that is embedded in rates. And if that cost of capital that we're going to file for in May is reduced or increased, that will be reflected in the new rates when we get them in effect in 2022. I'd like to also say that during the last cost of capital filing, we did go in seeking an increase. And ultimately, the Public Utilities Commission delivered a decrease for all of the utilities. It's a joint application with three other Class A water utilities, large utilities in California. And so the last time we went through this in 2017, I believe, in 2018, we got a decision and it was a rate decrease. And we passed that rate decrease through, through an advice letter. And obviously, we notified the, the parties, including yourself as well. So.
And is there different? Is it the same capital for which you'd be applying for a rate adjustment for cost of capital in this year as what you're, is already baked into the rate case? I'm just trying to understand. Are there two different parts of the infrastructure that you're?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I totally get it, Mayor. Rate making cannot be explained in, in talking points, as I've mentioned to you. So I really appreciate, really appreciate your questions. It's the same capital. All we're doing is changing the cost of that capital. So imagine your, your home and the mortgage that you own on that. It's the same mortgage that you're going to own on that, except all you're doing is reducing or increasing. Well, actually, if it's a home mortgage, you would reduce the, the interest rate. And that's essentially what we're doing here. We're going to adjust that interest rate either up or down, depending on what the Public Utilities Commission will allow us to do.
Okay. So this is purely financing. I get it. I was, I was conflating capital infrastructure with capital. Meaning, I, I think clearly you're talking about the cost of borrowing. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I think I get it. So if they're low interest rates, do we think we should be seeing a hike? Okay.
On that note, Mayor, if I can say, obviously, every time we send out a notice, you know, whether it's required or not by the PUC of a potential rate increase, you know, you, you obviously get, get mail and you get, you know, you get correspondence from your, from your constituents. I, I do want to just mention again that we are going to file this application on May 1st. We are required to do so. And so there will be a rate increase notice potentially that will go out on shortly after May 1st to all of our customers, many of which are you, the, the mayor and the council members. So you'll be receiving that, you'll be receiving that notice.
Okay, thank you. I know my colleagues have any questions, so let's go to them now. Councilmember Espersa.
That's from the last item, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I think you covered what I was wondering about. And, and I heard, I heard, I think it was John that you had mentioned how, I think it was you, how Valley Water's wholesale rate increases your rates. And so if we could just explain that a little further so our residents can understand and just follow, follow the cookie trail, if you will, on that. We can't hear you, John.
I think you're muted. You're still muted.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Mayor. Sorry, Councilmember Arenas. That won't be the last time that I do that. So I'm sharing my screen with you now. This is a slide that I think you were referring to. So every dollar essentially we collect from our customers, 38 cents is remitted to Valley Water for the purchase of wholesale water supply. And so think about, let, let's think about a 40 cent slice of the pie, just to make it nice and round. So if Valley Water raises their rates 10%, our costs are about 40% on, on every dollar. So we would raise our rates 4%. That's, that's essentially how, how it would work. And this is just a pass through cost. That's all it is. There's no, you know, there's nothing else attached to it.
John, maybe Andy could explain the importation of water. I think that goes to the, the basis of the question, why? I, I hear customers say, why do we need two water companies in the valley? So I think maybe, Andy, you could talk to that as a.
I'd be happy to, Eric. Thanks. Yeah. So, so Valley Water's role is really they are the wholesale water agency for the county. And what they do is sort of two things. They, they provide treated surface water through their three treatment plants. And that's both water that they collect in, in local reservoirs, as well as water that they import from the Central Valley Project and the State Water Project. And also for pumping the groundwater basin. We have wells in the groundwater basin, but we pay them a fee to extract that water. And the water that we get from their treatment plants and the water that we get from the groundwater wells is effectively at the same cost. But that's, you know, in any given year, that's 90 to 95% of the water that we deliver to our customers. We have some of our own supplies, but it's, it's a relatively small portion of our overall water portfolio. And so when Valley Water is raising their rates, they are paying off debt service on the infrastructure that they own or, or use to deliver water into the valley. They are also doing an infrastructure program to ensure water supply and water reliability. You may have seen some news about Anderson Dam. It's one of their biggest projects. It's their, their largest water right and their largest local reservoir. And they're having to rebuild that dam for seismic safety. That's all baked into that wholesale water rate as well as cost at their treatment plants, any of the costs that are passed on by the state or federal water project. So that all gets baked into that 40 cents on the dollar that John is talking about. But it's strictly for the purchase of water. We buy it from them and we build the exact cost that we pay into the water rate to our customers.
Right. Thank, thank you, Andy. And which leads me to my next question. What would your, your position be? I know that in our meeting last Friday, it was a study session and it was meeting as well, a joint meeting with Valley Water. And you heard, if you had attended, for many of our residents, how not appropriate it is to increase water rates in this very difficult time for many of our community. San Jose Water in my district covers one of the most hard, the hardest hit communities in the 95122, which is where folks are dying. This is where there's most infection of COVID rates. There's also overcrowding, crime, poverty, highest substantiated rates of child abuse. I mean, I can just go on. And to have a rate increase for water could really mean for these families a limitation of, of water to drink, right? And so it is, you know, it is absolutely crucial for us to have advocates and for, for everyone to have a position of really just, you know, just have a status quo in the meantime while we get back into recovery and people are back in jobs and, and we're in a better place. And so I'm wondering, what is your position in terms of Valley Water's increases due to some of their, their projects? And so I'm wondering, what is your position in terms of Valley Water's increases due to some of their, their projects that they want to focus on? And specifically to, to filter additional water? I know ultimately it's to increase the inventory of water, but this is through a filtration project.
Yeah, so, so one of the things I just want to point out is that, you know, Valley Water's board chose not to raise rates. Last year, the last fiscal year. This has actually resulted in a higher increase this year. So they sort of kicked the can down the road a little bit and, and now the proposed rate is, is that much higher because of it. You know, I think that we, we support, you know, the, the investments they're making in the critical infrastructure. I think we may disagree with Valley on some of the water supply projects, which are sort of future projects that they're investing in. And so, you know, it, it's kind of a mixed deal. Unfortunately, the way that the Valley Water Board operates is they sort of take a proposal and they vote on it. We have kind of weighed in very closely on, you know, which projects we think make a lot of sense. We think Anderson Reservoir, for example, is critical. It was both a public safety risk and also a water supply issue that's, that's important. Something like their proposed Pacheco Reservoir, maybe a valuable project in the future, but perhaps that one could wait a while. But they, they seem interested in moving ahead quickly on that. So I guess I would say we have kind of a mixed reaction to their proposal. Some of it I think we need to get behind because our water depends on it and we can't meet our mission if Valley Water doesn't meet theirs. But I think we may diverge in some of the bigger projects that are, that are further out and maybe not just in what they are, but in the timing.
What I will, I, I appreciate that, and I would ask the same of, of San Jose Water Company. Is that if there are any infrastructure. Projects that can wait. That don't necessarily impact the inventory. I, I would ask you to also wait and have the same level of consideration that I'm going to ask and that I've continued to ask. We had, for, for Valley Water, we, we advocated and along with the mayor, we advocated to, to. Not have a rate increase last time. I know we kicked the can down the road, but at the same time, there's a lot of choices that a board can make in terms of their investment and the number of projects that they can have. And when we take a look at our own city, the number of projects that we can take on as well. We have to make those really tough decisions. The decisions that we can't, that, that really impact us are the decisions that, that support our community. And that means shutting down libraries, shutting down community centers. You know, things, things of that sort that families, when they don't have enough money in their pockets, are looking to us to help support them. So I would ask you the same in your company to do the same thing that I will ask and I've been asking for Valley Water to do. And that is to put a hold on your infrastructure costs or costs that you can actually delay. And that don't impact the supplier of water. Thank you. And, and I'd also like to move the mayor's memo.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mahan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to Eric, Andy, John, Jake and rest of the team for being here. I know you don't have to be here, but I think it's really important for building public trust and, and I appreciate it. Also, just want to quickly thank the members of the public who spoke, I know some of whom are District Ten residents. And a number of residents I represent, I represent have organized a community working group just about this issue. Because they're really quite concerned about the raising cost of water. And, you know, I think they're concerned, just from a resident's perspective, as I've heard it, is that the increases. Feel like a lot relative to the, the rate at which people's incomes are going up, the rate of inflation. I mean, I, you know, it sounds like we may be looking at about fourteen percent increase, according to the mayor's line of questioning there. So I think what, what I'm hearing from residents is, is really just, you know, confusion about the, the magnitude of the increase. The, the way it's structured, where it's, it's, looks like it's largely front loaded. Where, where the money's going and what they get for it, right? I think there's a real concern about, are they protected in the sense of the value generated by the increase? Is it staying in the community, is it benefiting the community? Or is it going to other uses that maybe they're less comfortable with or feel are not in the public benefit? So that's a lot of what I'm hearing, I have a few questions come along those lines. And I think ultimately, and this is, I think, the point of the hearing today. I think what people are really asking for is just a high degree of transparency and then, you know, accountability for where the money is supposed to go. So that they can feel confident that the increased costs that they're bearing, that are going up faster than inflation, faster than incomes for a lot of folks, is actually necessary and going to make their lives better. So I guess maybe we can, I don't know if you, John, want to put up the, your, your dollar graphic again or not. But I, I think, you know, one question I've heard a lot is, you know, knowing that you have a holding, a, a parent company that's a holding company and you have some sister companies. How, how much of the rate increase can or, or do you think will go back up to the holding company? I imagine they've got overhead costs and shareholders to, to offer a return to. And so how, how, can you tell us a little bit about how that money can flow and might flow?
Allow me to interrupting, and John, could you also see if you could get that to full screen?
I'm sorry, is, is it not full screen, Mayor, it's a full screen online?
Yeah, actually, usually there's a slide if you go to display. Oh, it doesn't look like you don't have that.
Like that?
Go to, there you go.
There you go, bingo. That's it, thank you.
So John, sorry, did that, did that make sense or should I try to ask that question again?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, 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 I think it does. Matt, obviously, you know, San Jose Water is owned by our parent company SJW Group. And so there is some, there is some outflow of capital up to, up to SJW Group. And that's really in our return on equity, which is a component of our cost of debt. The cost of debt includes both equity and, and debt. And we're going to be going through that process soon with our costs, cost of capital filing. I don't have the number for you in, in terms of like, you know, how much flows to, you know, to our parent. You know, it, it's something that I can certainly get back, get back with you on. And Councilmember, I certainly welcome the opportunity to get in front of that water working group as, as we've talked and, and, you know, present our information and just have a frank conversation. I find that those are the best ways to have a conversation about this. You know, you and I have had conversations about it and, and I think every time you come away, you, you either hate me for, for giving you all of that information. Or you, you know, you say, wow, I have maybe, you know, a slightly different perspective than, than what came in. And that's all I can really ask is just for an opportunity to have that dialogue.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I, I appreciate that. And I know some of our residents would, would love to meet with you. I appreciate you being willing to do that. And I never, I never hate you, John. I, I will admit, I have not made it through the, I think it was a six thousand page report you might have referred me to. You know, I'm generally a good student, but that was, even that was kind of pushing it. But okay, so that would be within your cost of capital, which is about ten cents on the dollar. And then, you know, I get a lot of questions, okay, well, executive compensation, again, this is in the spirit of. If my rates are going up fourteen percent next year, how much of that's actually going to the infrastructure to, to basically save? Reliable water for me and my family versus shareholders, executive compensation, et cetera, right? So, so I assume exec comp is in operating costs in the twenty one cents?
Yes, that, that is correct, Councilmember, it's in the twenty one cents. The system improvements are what you see, that's the infrastructure charges of, of twenty four cents there, yes.
Okay, and then this increase is not restricted. So, you know, often when we go to the voters for a, like a bond or a new tax, it's often, we, we promise exactly where it's going. This is not restricted to infrastructure, right? This just kind of goes into your, the equivalent of your general fund, is that right?
Actually, it, it, I, I, I wouldn't characterize it that way. We, we actually propose a list of projects that we're going to complete in, in our general rate case application. Obviously, life happens when you plan, right? And so, you know, if you don't do project A, you're going to do project B because project B failed first. And project A is going to be deferred until, you know, the next time. So there's some flexibility there, but pretty much we do what we have, what we have put in our, in our capital proposals. Subject to the approval of the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay, and so the nine percent that we're looking at for, for this particular application, for the first year of the three years. Is that restricted to that list of infrastructure projects?
So, so it, it. Okay, I'm, I'm going to have to get into the weeds a little bit. So previously, in, in prior rate case applications, the Public Advocates Office and the Public Utilities Commission really has looked at our application and said, okay. You've given us, I'm just going to use a number, you've given us a hundred projects and these are the hundred projects that you're going to do. We don't think these thirty projects are good. We think you should hold off, we, we, we don't approve them. And so you do these seventy projects. And, and in the past, we've done pretty much, you know, the majority of those seventy projects, other than when life happens and, you know, a project fails and you got to accelerate that replacement. So we kind of substituted in and out. So that's what we've done in the past. In this last rate case application, what the Public Utilities Commission authorized us to do is they said, okay, we're going to give you a budget. You make that budget go essentially as far as you can, stretch that budget as far as you can, complete as many projects as you can, based on your needs, based on your asset management plan needs. Based on your system needs to deliver safe and reliable service. And so that's what we, that's what we have done. It remains to be seen how the public advocates will weigh in on this rate application, whether they will do the same thing or whether they will. You know, take each project individually and say, you know, this is good, this is good, and this is no good. So that remains to be seen. But the projects, you know, what we put in, in our capital plan are the projects that we're going to do for the most part.
Okay, but it's not technically restricted. So I guess that kind of leads to two questions. One is, just on the list of projects, are, are you planning and would you be willing to? Present, to, to give to the public the itemized list with the price tag and then report out? Is that part of your normal operating procedure or is that something you'd be, you'd do if not?
So I'm going to ask Jake Walsh, our Assistant Chief Engineer, to weigh in and whether or not Jake. The itemized list of projects is in our six thousand page asset management plan and capital projects submittal to the PUC.
That's the one I couldn't get through.
Thanks, John, for the opportunity. Yes, we, we do have an itemized list of projects. It's actually more than the three years as part of this rate case application. We presented a six year plan in our enterprise asset management plan. And so we have every single project with the estimated cost that we, you know, the best costs that we know to date. These are based on planning level estimates. As we have surveys and full designs, costs change. And as John said, we have to sometimes adapt and we have to defer other projects if some costs or some projects come in more costly. But yes, we do have an itemized list in that application.
We'd be happy to share that with, with that group, you know, when we need or, you know, some, in some other manner, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I'm, I'm sure our city staff and other council offices would be interested. I mean, what I'm trying to get at, and I know it's complicated, hence the six thousand page application. You know, if you're going to raise four hundred plus million dollars, how much is that going to go to infrastructure projects or other investments that benefit San Jose residents and, and ratepayers? Is I guess what I'm trying to get at, are you able to actually break that down?
Yes, and maybe, John, I can just expand on that. It, it sometimes gets difficult because we are an interconnected water distribution system, right? And you have tanks possibly that are constructed in one jurisdiction that then serve customers in, in another jurisdiction. Or we have a groundwater well that may be serving the entire service area. And so when you start getting into kind of the impact and, and the benefit to customers, it gets a little bit more challenging. But if you're just talking about where the asset is constructed, you know, that, that's very something we can easily present and share. Certain assets that. You know, for example, acoustic leak detection sensors. We know that we're going to be purchasing some additional sensors, but we don't yet know exactly where those sensors are going to be located yet. So, so some of those also, you know, we may have to make some assumptions based on. Just some things that we can come to an agreement on. But for things that are constructed, it should be pretty, pretty, pretty easy for us to prepare that for you.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be helpful. And then just back to the relationship you have with your parent company, I guess the, the other question that, that your previous comment brought to mind, John, is just. How much of this rate increase might go to paying down debts from the acquisition of other companies in other regions?
Yeah, so, so I, I think I'll take a crack at it, Eric, I'd, I'd love for you to weigh in if I'm, if I'm veering off track here. So, so a, a water utility operation, a water system is, is very much a localized entity, right? I mean, we're, there, there is no really mixing in terms of expenses and, and other things, projects with, you know, with Connecticut, with Texas, with, with Maine. What, what we do have as a result of the combination, to be honest with you, and this really played out during the, the storm that we just experienced in Texas in the south. Is, is we have a greater pool of resources that we can draw on to help all of our subsidiaries weather these difficult times. All of the subsidiaries stood up and helped our Texas utility. I'm sure you've heard the horror stories over there. You know, I'm sure you've heard about Jackson, Mississippi and how they were without water for two weeks after the, after the storm came, came and went. And I think as a larger diversified company, we're able to have those kind of resources to weigh in. The, the, the fact of the matter is that when we go through a rate case filing, the PUC is going to look at this very, very closely. And they're going to make sure, they're going to make absolutely sure that everything that we propose is going to benefit just San Jose Water Company customers. Just as the other public utilities in the other states are going to do the same, the same thing. And so there's really no mixing, if you will, or commingling of, of, you know, expenses or funds or anything like that. And Eric, if you can rescue me here, that would be great.
Council, Councilmember Man, I really appreciate the question and we do get it a lot. There is no subsidization from California to Connecticut to Texas to Maine. Each operation stands on its own. We are able to share certain costs, like an accounting department that produces financial statements. So we can actually allocate expenses that would typically have been borne by California customers now to other states. That comes out of the revenue requirement for our California customers and then those other states would pick up those costs. So in fact, we have a, a work paper in this rate case that shows exactly what that was in two thousand and twenty and what it looks like in future years. So actually, it's lowering costs to California customers because of the, the broader scale that we have. Someone like me, my salary used to be allocated across California and Texas. And so now we have another hundred and sixty thousand customers over which, you know, common costs such as myself at the parent level can be recovered through our businesses. So, so it's a really win for our customers and there is no subsidization from California to any other state.
Thank you, it is, okay, so that's good to hear. So you, you've got some economies of scale at kind of an administrative level that's spread across more ratepayers. I think I get that, that sounds good. John, you made, I'll admit, you made me a little nervous there when you mentioned Texas. Because as much as I, you know, I'm concerned about the people of Texas, when you say we, we can pool resources in an emergency. I think what residents want to be sure of is that there is no subsidization, which is what I think I heard Eric just saying. So there's, there is no way that debts or other liabilities from other companies that the holding company oper, owns and operates. Can in any way be paid for by the ratepayers of San Jose outside of those pooled administrative costs?
That's correct. In fact, we committed in regulatory proceedings to establish what's called ring fencing, which is a boundary that specifically sets off and, and precludes the commingling. Of, of cash and funds, if you will, at the, at the operating level. So it, it's an intentional protection from one state to the next and we very gladly opposed it and, and agreed to it. What John was really talking about is mutual aid. And that's what our employees came to the aid of customers of ours in Texas for, for a few days. We served as an emergency operations center backup. There will likely be a day when our employees in other states come to the aid of our operation in California. And that's part of the strength of this organization.
Sure, sure, okay, all right, well, that, that sounds good, thanks. And then. We talked a bit about the total rates, rate, rate increases that can be applied. From Mayor had a series of questions there I found interesting. I, I guess the, the remaining question I have on just the sheer scale of the rate increases. Why it's, why it seems to be so front loaded and that, you know, your initial application, I think, gave us all sticker shock. And then it was nice to see it come down a bit, but frankly, fourteen percent next year is, is going to be hard on a lot of people. So what, why, can that be smoothed out? I think that the average of at least this rate application would be closer to five point seven five percent, still, you know, quite a bit higher than inflation, I think. But what's? Still, you know, quite a bit higher than inflation, I think, but what's, uh, yeah, can, why is it front loaded?
Yeah, so, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll take a crack at that. So, um, I, I, I think that's really, uh, a, a, a regulatory process, uh, that we go to. We, the San Jose Water Company only sets rates really once every three years. We go through this process once every three years with the Public Utilities Commission. That's why it takes, you know, fourteen months, uh, for us to go through this process. That's why it's so comprehensive. That's why our filing, um, council member man, is not just six thousand pages in the, in the report that I mentioned, but it's about ten thousand pages, uh, altogether. And, and the Public Advocates Office, I can assure you, and, and Ting, uh, my counterpart is there and he can confirm, I, I am fairly certain that they are looking through every single one of those pages and making sure that, that, you know, what we're proposing is, is just and, and reasonable. So when you have a, when you have a rate case that sets rates essentially for the following three year period, and then you have a fourteen month, call it twelve to fourteen month, uh, processing period for that, you're really looking at rates that are four years old when you get out to the end of that cycle. And so, you know, rates are, uh, rate setting is a forward looking endeavor. And predicting something that's going to happen, you know, two, three, four years from now is just not something that we can do, uh, very well. Uh, you know, and so, uh, essentially what happens is when you go in for a rate case, what you're doing is you're chewing up everything again in that first year, right? So you're going to true up everything, uh, from the last three year cycle in that first year. The out years, the second and third years are really just escalation years. We apply a CPUC approved inflation factor, uh, to our rates, as well as any other, uh, additional infrastructure investments that may, uh, that may fall in, in those years. And that's really how the out years are, um, that's really how the out years are calculated. Uh, you mentioned how water rates are rising faster than inflation and, 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 um, you know, I think, I think if you do a Google search for water rates rising faster than inflation, you will see a trove of very high quality resources that shows how this, uh, this phenomenon is impacting, uh, water utilities nationwide, public and, and private. Um, you know, it's just, we are, uh, kind of at the perfect juncture right now of, you know, the dawn of the infrastructure replacement era. Here in California, we're dealing with other things. We're dealing with, you know, water supply challenges. Uh, this is the second year of a, uh, potentially a multi-year drought. I don't know what, uh, Valley Water is looking to do at this point. I know that they're talking about, you know, how they're going to handle this, uh, should we have another, another dry year? And, and that's one thing that I would like to say, uh, and, and give them some, some props. Valley Water has actually done a very good job for, for our mutual constituents in terms of shoring up our water supply in times of drought. Uh, we were the envy of the state during twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, when, um, you know, when we had groundwater supplies, uh, to draw from. Yes, we, we had to call for conservation, there was no doubt about that. But if you recall, when the governor came out with his emergency declaration, uh, the, this area was actually one of the areas where they called for a, a lower amount of conservation, mandatory conservation, uh, than other areas owing to the good work of, uh, owing to the good work of Valley Water.
Thanks, yeah, and I, you know, I do appreciate infrastructure is critical and expensive and we often under invest in it. Um, I, I will just say though, in, in response, I, I really, I, I understand, I think, how, how your rates are normally structured. That being said, I think it is a real burden on residents. And I think if, if you could consider smoothing out that, that rate increase, I, I know the community would be very grateful and I'll just say for Ting's benefit, I mean, that's a major request of the community is, you know, not getting hit with a ten, fifteen, twenty percent cost escalation in one year. I mean, that, that really impacts budgets, especially for people who are just kind of paycheck to paycheck, as many members of our community are. So, um, I'm going to, I apologize to my colleagues because I don't usually spend twenty minutes on an item like this. But I, I do want to just wrap up trying to get a slightly better understanding of rate relief for our residents who are struggling to pay their water bills. And, and again, apologies for not being an expert on any of this, um, at least yet. But, um, you know, what, what, what has the company done for those, um, ratepayers who were struggling, you know, through the pandemic? And, and maybe we can talk a little bit about what, uh, programs are offered and kind of the, the fiscal impact to you guys of that going forward. So is that enough of a question for you to start, John?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, council member. So, uh, so right now, uh, like all utilities, including, uh, the municipal water system, we have a moratorium on shut offs. Uh, nobody's getting shut off for, for non-payment, disconnected for non-payment. Uh, we are offering payment arrangements, uh, to our customers. We're offering other programs to help them manage their bills, including our, our very popular catch program. It's basically a, a water, uh, water audit program that will come out and, and, you know, safely, uh, you know, uh, conduct and audit and, and, and help customers, uh, use water, uh, more efficiently. Uh, one of the things that, uh, that has resulted from this, uh, this pandemic, right? Uh, an opportunity for us is our, um, our water rate assistance program. And so that program provides a fifteen percent discount for customers who qualify. And according to a recent SPUR, uh, the Regional Planning Organization that you're all familiar with, according to a recent, uh, uh, study that they did, uh, we have a penetration rate in terms of signup of eligible homeowners who, who actually qualify for the program of about seventy-five percent. Uh, that's, that's a huge number, uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of program. There's always room for improvement. Uh, council member, we're trying to, you know, hit the street, uh, you know, with our communications program to try and drive up that, uh, that enrollment to try and help, uh, you know, customers, uh, receive that fifteen percent discount. And, uh, you know, we're working with PG&E, our, our, our electric utility to do that as well through their care program.
Okay, thanks. And is, is, so I appreciate the, the, um, suspension of water shut off, that's critical. Is that, is that something you voluntarily done? And if so, how much longer do you plan to do that?
So, so it, it was, it was a, uh, it was an edict, uh, it was, uh, it was, uh, issued by the governor. The governor actually issued an emergency proclamation and then the PUC followed suit with some additional guidance for what we can and cannot do and what programs, uh, we can offer our customers. Uh, right now, I can tell you that the Public Utilities Commission is looking, uh, at a potentially a July thirteenth, I'm sorry, a June thirtieth date for the end of that shut off moratorium. Uh, obviously, uh, it, it's not, uh, completely in their hands. I think the governor is going to actually be the, be the gating factor, uh, in this. And so, but, uh, looking ahead a little bit, uh, three months, if you will, uh, they have asked us to put together a customer transition plan for what happens when we do start to go back. And, and you know, what happens to, uh, you know, the customers who, uh, you know, can't pay their bills and stuff like that. There are a couple of proceedings going on right now, the PUC, that's looking at that very issue of, of, of arrears just, uh, with, uh, with our customers and how, uh, how we can handle that. And, uh, just like, uh, the municipal water system, we have not been spared. Uh, there we are seeing, you know, obviously, uh, quite a few customers who need some additional help and the arrears are piling up and, you know, we're certainly, uh, welcome, uh, you know, um, we're certainly here to help them in any way that we can.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I, I guess my, my fear is what's going to happen to these people, right? I mean, when, when this fifteen percent isn't going to cut it when we've got neighborhoods with twenty percent unemployment. So I, I mean, I, I just, I don't know if you can comment any further on what you'd be willing to do, but it would, um, strike me as, as terribly unjust if people in the community are getting, um, effectively pushed out of their homes because they can't afford rent and utilities at this point, um, while, you know, dividends are still going up. So I just, I don't know what else you, you're willing to say or do on that front, but it's certainly a, a priority for me and I would assume my colleagues.
I'll, I'll comment on that, you know, our mission is about public health and public safety. And, uh, you know, we want no part of, you know, shutting people off or forcing them out of their homes to pay a past due water bill. It took a long time for these arrears to develop and we'll do everything we can to extend those payments out as long as we can. All a customer has to do is call us, we will work with them, we will commit to working with them. And, uh, it's, we want no one to be shut off. We've learned and seen during a pandemic, you know, the simple act of being able to wash your hands, what a difference that can make for public health. So, uh, that would be our goal, that no one gets shut off. And I believe we can achieve levels like that. If customers work with us, we will work with them, we'll find ways to, to make that happen.
Good, thank you, Eric, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, thank you. I've, I've taken enough of everyone's time. Um, thanks again, and Mayor, I'm, I'm finished.
Thank you, uh, appreciate the questions and, uh, all the questions are good ones. Uh, I, I just wanted to follow up on one question that council member Mahan made, and it combines with comments I know that came out of the public as well during our, um, our brief public comment, which is, you know, the merger with Connecticut Water. My recollection is more than a billion dollars and it's one point one billion all cash. I assume some combination of stock and debt used to pay for that merger. And I understand that, you know, you keep a barrier between the holding company and, uh, the, the operating companies in San Jose and, and Connecticut and elsewhere. I, I guess, as we go back to that whole cost of capital, uh, portion of the dollar bill, that's the ten percent, I guess, of the, of the rate case, I, I assume that cost of capital is what you're paying, uh, for dividends. All utilities companies, of course, famously pay, pay dividends or, or interest on debt, is, is that, is that fair?
So, um, San Jose Water Company pays, pays interest on the debt that it has incurred to fund the infrastructure that's in place for California customers. So there's no, you know, relaying that up or back from the parent. Uh, it pays a dividend to the parent, uh, each year. And, um, you know, so that moves up to the, to the parent company. But the, the, uh, debt and the stock that the parent company sold to fund the transaction, uh, all of that is serviced by the income stream from Connecticut Water and from Maine Water. Um, so if we, if it didn't and didn't cover that plus added value, then it would be, you know, value destructive for our shareholders. And of course, you know, that's not a good thing to do. So, so the earnings from those utilities, Mayor, you know, pay for the, the capital at the parent company level that was used to purchase that utility. Again, customers in California, there's no impact on them as a result of that merger. There's no intermingling of that capital.
Okay, and even as you described, to pay the dividend for the holding company, we, how, how you respond to the argument that, well, the holding company wasn't spending one point one billion on this acquisition? There would be, uh, a source, uh, to pay its own return on capital, uh, with that's in dividends or paying off interest on debt. It, it would not need the same amount theoretically from its contributor, contributing subsidiaries. Can you just help us understand clearly why, uh, how confident we could be, uh, that that merger had no impact on what folks are paying today for the water?
You know, I, I'll, I'll state it again, you know, the parent company, uh, the capital that, that it, that it borrowed and the equity that the parents sold, not, not at the operating utility level, you know, funded that acquisition. And the earnings that get divended up from those utilities, you know, cover that capital. So that's a, it's really a, if you will, think about it separately because prior to that, you know, dividends from, uh, San Jose Water Company that rolled up to the parent company, you know, supported the parent company and its size at that time. And then ultimately, the parent company would dividend to the public shareholders. I would say this, we would invite a complete and transparent, uh, review from, uh, Office of Public Advocate and the staff at the Public Utility Commission who are experts, they can do a deep dive, will share any and all information, um, and do everything we can to demonstrate exactly as I've said, uh, there, there is no co-mingling of those, of those proceeds and it has no impact on customers here in California. Other than I would actually say there's a benefit because we have been able to allocate expenses out of the revenue requirement in California now that we have this larger scale.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tholmer. All right, I, I think those are all the questions. Uh, I don't see any other hands up. So, uh, thank you for spending your evenings with us. Um, we have a motion. Let's vote on that motion from Councilmember Renus.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Lookardo?
Hi. Great, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. We look forward to additional conversations in the future, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, John.
Thanks for having us.
Right, thank you. We'll return then to our, um, our previously scheduled agenda, um, which is, uh, item, uh, eight point two, which is the, uh, homeless, uh, annual report and addressing homelessness during COVID nineteen encampment and abatement item. We were in the middle of public comment. Um, we had restricted public comment to a minute, I'm going to continue that since it's now eight thirty. I know we have several more items left that are all substantive, all having to do with housing and homelessness. Uh, and so I'm going to continue that, uh, one minute limitation so that we can ensure we can get everybody's comment. Um, so, uh, I will call you and thank you for your patience. Uh, we'll start with Don Draper.
I'm, I'm muting, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Don, hi.
So, um, uh, I may have missed my opportunity to comment on the San Jose Water, uh, question. And if that's not, uh, you know, appropriate at this time, then that's okay, we could do it another time, but that.
I will probably be coming back to council on that one. I, I know it's, it's scheduled to come back, so we'll definitely hear from you then.
Okay, um, and I had written a letter to the editor, uh, on this a little while ago. It's, you could actually look at that, see what I was going to say. So, thank you, I will look for the opportunity next time to, uh, uh, address this with you.
Thank you, Don. All right, Catherine Hedges?
Um, good evening. Yes, I, I agree with the speakers, the Law Foundation and other people for the break who are saying that we can't move people out of encampments unless we have a place to move them to. Ideally, that would be the hotels that FEMA will provide funding for and failing, then failing the encampments. Sorry, I'm getting an echo. Anyway, um, I'm also concerned about people talking about using Laura's Law to get the homeless off the streets and saying that that's going to solve the problem. No, that, that's not a humane thing to do either. And, you know, we need, we need to treat the homeless, you know, unhoused people who, as one of the speakers said, you know, they have homes. It's a tent or a car, but it's still a home, it goes unhoused, thank you.
Thank you. Julia Fong Nguyen?
Hi, everyone, I'm Julia and I grew up in this community. One of the most disturbing memories I have growing up here is during my senior year of high school, a group of students and I volunteered at a Coyote Creek cleanup. We, when we arrived, we realized that we had come after a city sponsored abatement. I am extremely disturbed and was extremely disturbed by the complete destruction of homes. And that at this cleanup, we were made to throw away family photos, ID cards and other things that people need to survive. Abatements completely disregard the humanity of our unhoused neighbors. After graduating from college and coming home, I'm extremely disappointed to hear that the city continues to support these abatements, even in spite of recommendations by our, our healthcare providers during a pandemic. I'm speaking today as a longtime community member and standing alongside other youth who represent the future of this community. When I say our community needs self-determined aid and care, not abatements. City council members, please stop supporting and using abatements and sweeps and start investing in providing life-affirming services. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Batman?
Hi, uh, this is, uh, Batman. Um, I, I do work with the unhoused in San Jose and, uh, unhoused, not homeless, first of all. And also, you cannot, we cannot allow sweeps to continue. We, they've been going illegally, uh, might I add, for a couple of weeks now. Um, and this cannot continue. We cannot kick people out of their homes when they have nowhere else to go. It is immoral. There are children out there, there are people who have nowhere to go. We need to help people. We need to make sure that we know where they're going first before we decide to kick them out. So sanctioning camps or not, we cannot continue abatements. Abatements cannot continue at the moment. We do not have a plan, so therefore, abatement should not happen. And, you know, it's ridiculous that we even have to have this conversation. It should be a no brainer, to be completely honest. I'm furious, to be honest.
Thank you, uh, the person with the phone number ending five one four zero?
Yeah, keep in mind that this is a city that wants to take down statues, rename streets, see how high your flagpole is in your front yard, it's over an inch to make you take it down. This is a city that takes a lot of time to do all these things. Uh, and they don't seem to have money for anything else. And the people who think that they're going to all of a sudden have money for the homeless, they're, they're crazy. Because the city likes to concentrate on other things. the city likes to concentrate on other things. You know, they like to concentrate on making sure that a cop hides behind a bush. Make sure you don't roll, you know, through a stop sign. You got parking enforcement, code enforcement. This is a fascistic city, people. I mean, you know, this is what they do. They keep down the people who are the rule, who follow the rules, who pay the taxes, who pay their fines. What do you think they're going to do to a homeless person? Th- these people have no heart. They have no soul. And why should the homeless people?
Thank you. Felicia Gersberg? Felicia, your device is still muted. Uh, we're not able to hear you yet. If you could unmute your device.
Yes, got it. Thank you. I'm Felicia Gersberg from Together We Will San Jose and the Unhoused Response Group. I want to thank staff for the informative presentation earlier this evening. To the council and the community, I want to emphasize that when you talk about abatements and no encampment zones, you're talking about people, not rubbish to be swept away out of sight. I'm in favor of helping people by providing sanctioned encampments, support services, and ultimately housing. I'm opposed to destroying people's shelters, discarding their belongings, and pushing them out with no place to go. That is cruel and doesn't solve anything. It only keeps more misery on people who are already struggling to survive. There but for the grace of luck and privilege go I, you, or any one of us. Unhoused folks are friends, family members, and part of our community. Please establish sanctioned encampments and work toward housing for all. Do not sweep away people as if they were trash.
Thank you. Mr. Beekman? Uh, Mr. Beekman? Okay, next speaker. Uh, Mr. Clark?
I'm Lee Clark from, uh, Destination Home, and I just want to say I'm in favor of safe encampments. People out there in the house, they already have, they struggling enough, you know, they, and they come through and taking their, their homes as someone said, you know, and then they have to go look for another one. It's cold out there. The shelters are full. You know, there's nowhere to go. There's more people wanting to get into shelters, but there's no room. We're trying to end homelessness, not make it harder for them. You know, the life is uncomfortable as it is without the abatements. So I'm, I'm just saying, I'm here in for the, um, for the, uh, safe encampments, you know, people, taking into consideration that people out there are trying to survive. They're not out there because they want to be out there. They're out there trying to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Justin Memura?
Hello. Good morning, Mayor, or good, good evening, Mayor and Council. It seems like, uh, it's about to be morning, right? First of all, thank you so much for the support, uh, for Beautify San Jose. And, uh, thank you for just the presentation that was on earlier this afternoon. We just want to, uh, as I'm calling from the Trash Punks, we just want to support Beautify San Jose. We support sanctioned encampments, but also transitional housing for unhoused community. And we definitely support, um, you know, your efforts in wanting to, to have a cleaner San Jose, cleaner creeks, cleaner waterways, and, uh, everything else in between. So, uh, whatever we could do to help with our volunteer group, we're here to support you guys and, uh, we'll be out there. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. And thanks for all the work you do with Trash Punks. Andres Quintero?
Hi, uh, hi, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the State Council. The Escudero member of the Almiron School Board, I'm here to speak in favor of the mayor's proposal. It's an item that I brought up at our last Almiron School Board meeting, a premium buffer zone around our schools. I'm always, I'm, I'm not always aligned with some of the things that the mayor's proposed, but on this one, uh, I am completely in support of creating a, a buffer zone that makes sure that pathways to daycare facilities, to schools are free of encampments. This is not anything in particular, it, it, I'm not targeting the, the unhoused. I just want to make sure that our students have a safe path back and forth from schools that is un, un, unobstructed and, uh, free of, uh, anything that might harm them. And so please support, uh, that, uh, the mayor's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Wright? Robert, your device appears to be muted right now. You try to unmute that. Robert, we're still not able to hear you because the device appears to be on mute. Robert, we're going to, um, we're going to go to the next person. Why don't you go ahead and try to see if you can work on that and raise your hand again. I'm happy to call you. If you're able to unmute it. Peggy, welcome.
Okay, uh, yes. People have to lay their heads somewhere. Uh, is there enough housing for very long-term people? Are there enough motel rooms and shelters and, and hotel rooms during a pandemic? Are there sanctioned campgrounds? Are there safe parking areas? What about COVID testing and vaccines? Since these conditions are not met, it is certain that people who would be removed from encampments will have to set up close by or in a similar location. It's a disturbing sight, but is it not more disturbing to see that people are forced to live in the cold and the rain, the heat and the sun with only some canvas or cardboard to protect them? We need sanctioned encampments. We need no sweeps. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Greenfield?
Good evening. Um, I'm Wendy Greenfield from South Beijing's Voice for Peace. Um, Mahendas Gandhi said, "A nation's greatness is measured by how it treats its weakest members." "The large number of unhoused residents in the city of San Jose are a challenge to all of us who are housed residents, and we will be judged by how we treat them." "We need a bottom line that there will be no sweeps or abatements of encampments, removing houseless, houseless people from their present homes and community support without stable sanctioned encampments ready and waiting for them. Encampments in districts around the city that are maintained by city workers to assure a clean and stable living area, clean water, and social and medical services. People who are moved need transportation together with their belongings so they don't lose what precious few possessions they have. In this era of COVID, we need to do this for the sake of unhoused, to maintain our city's values and to support the health and welfare of the surrounding communities."
Thank you. Morris Chubb?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I am in support of sanctioned encampments. I'm in support of Eli Housing. I am not in support of, of the sweeps. Predominantly, predominantly, you've heard this passionate call because people need a place to stay. They lose their, their possessions. I'm here to say it's not economically smart because all you're doing is you moving them from one place to the next and cleaning up again after them, if you even clean up. Why not help them clean up? When I had a child who didn't clean up their room, I didn't tell them to go clean up the room. I took their hand. I walked through that room with them and I helped them clean up their room. Let's help the homeless clean up their encampments. We don't have to sweep them. We can help them clean up their own environments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mina?
Hello, Mayor and Councilmen. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Mina Raj. I'm part of Gape's Silicon Valley Foundation. We work with the San Jose Unhoused Friends. I am all in for sanctioned better encampment facilities for our friends. However, I'm fully against sweeps before we establish a proper encampment for them to move to. Having worked with our unhoused friends personally, I can assure you that they are people just like you and me. It is hence extremely inhuman to destroy their homes and take away documents and IDs that are extremely critical for them to survive. I also would like to request a widely efficient plan published for mobile vaccination for the unhoused. Today, it seems to be hard to find. Maybe you can help us, uh, find it more easily and, uh, have it readily available. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Scott?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Richard.
Great. Um, my name is Richard Scott. I am the retired supervisor of the original county mental health homeless team. And I continue to be a homeless advocate, work in the camps. I really want to say how excited I am to hear the presentation that was given today. It couldn't have been better. It was more enlightened than anything I have heard in, in the county so far in the city. The big issue we have here is, are you, as a city council, going to support this effort? Or are you going to do the off with their heads cry of the Nimbies? You know, you have to have the political support, I mean, political courage to take a good plan that you've paid for and follow through on it. I'm amazed at the support for sanctioned encampments on this call today. And I, I wish you well and thank you very, very much for putting this on.
Thank you. Raven?
Hi, um, I am against the state sanctioned violence against unhoused communities. Doing a sweep is basically killing them. It shouldn't happen. Uh, there is money to support our, our unhoused neighbors. When we spend half a billion dollars on the police, why can't we spend that on our unhoused communities? When, you know, police, what do they do? Who do they protect? When they go and terrorize the east side and the south side? When they go and terrorize our unhoused neighbors every day, when they pull them out of their tents without a warrant? Without a warrant? That is not supposed to happen. But unhoused neighbors don't get to know that, you know? They don't get their rights. Um, so I'm against sweeps and I'm not going to be here appealing to y'all's morals, compass, because I know that y'all don't have morals. Y'all go to sleep peacefully at night in the comfort of your home while our neighbors sleep in trash, get bitten by rats and bugs, and have to go to hospitals. That's all I have to say. Bye.
Thank you. Todd Williams?
Good evening. In 2014, there was a very large abatement called The Jungle. Since that time, there have been studies, studies, and more studies, and public perception is that the situation is worse. In the study presented today, I believe they said for every one person that is housed, three more people become unhoused. Unless you address and solve the root issues like wage disparity versus perpetually perpetuating continued dependency, we're going to just be a dog chasing its tail. And it's one of Lady Gaga's dogs. So please, less studies, more action, and help people out of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Step Avela?
Let's talk about the process of these abatements for a second because we need to talk about how dehumanizing it is to have a crew of SJPD roll up on your home when you're already stressed out, just to take your stuff and push you out, to tow away your home, and then say, what, you can pay the money that you don't have to get it back? It's violent. It's cruel. These are your people. These are your people, Mayor. They, just because they don't have an address to submit your stuff to, doesn't mean that they're not your people. Some of these people have been living in San Jose longer than you've been in office. You know, that, so it is disgraceful that y'all turn around and treat them like they're nothing when these, these people are San Jose. And you need to start acting like, you guys stop being violent. Just think about it in turn, think about yourself. If you can't get yourself in that position, come out, work with me. I'm out there five days a week. I will welcome you with open arms. Well, distanced.
Thank you. Uh, person on the phone number six nine one zero. Welcome.
County vote, the county is voting on doing the pick count. Wait for that vote, which will hopefully be yes, then wait for conclusion of the pick count. We have to know how many unhoused neighbors we have and get the necessary fund to help them. Create a task force made up evenly of city unhoused neighbors, formerly unhoused neighbors, and advocates to assess current de facto sanctioned camps, then assess other camps. No sweeps until the entire process is complete. All camps should be self-governed. There should be camps in every district. There should be no mass camps. Thank you to staff for a kick-ass presentation.
Jesslyn Faust?
Yes, uh, I think, uh, the proposal of Mayor Licardo is absolutely horrifying. It's in violation of multiple international laws in regards to human rights. It's in violation of the UN Convention of 1948 in regards to human rights. And I speak to you as a formerly unhoused person who's experienced these problems. And it, it, you know, you are, are saying in your memorandum that you can overrule the guidelines of public health officials. How dare you? What is your qualification to do so? Um, I find your proposal absolutely horrifying in, in violation of multiple, multiple internationally recognized human rights laws. Uh, and I think you should be criminally prosecuted and taken out of office for your actions.
Thank you, Jesslyn. Actually, the county executive that issued the guidance indicated that the city certainly has the discretion and ability to do so. Deb Kramer?
Hi, I'm Deb Kramer with Key Kaya Creek Beautiful, and thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts on the encampment management strategy. There are many stakeholders, but I'm here to represent the waterways and wildlife that need our voice while considering the safety of all people. I really appreciate Service Model 2.0, which uses the mapping overlays to prioritize where homeless encampments are located, the need for trash removal, and now the source services. So again, thanks to the Beautify SJ team and EOC for using a data-driven approach to prioritizing these needs. I am in favor of sanctioned encampments, as indicated in Councilmember Paul's memos and Councilmember Mahan's recent memo, to connect people to housing opportunities and behavioral health resources and addiction services. However, this only applies to those that want help and housing. I also am encouraged by Councilmember Mahan's proposal on iterative model for setbacks and the mayor's emphatic message to start with child-serving areas such as schools or childcare centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Brody Story?
Uh, I want to start off first by acknowledging the stark difference between the two presentations. The first presentation really emphasized the fact that there is humanity, whereas the other one kind of spoke very without conscience about the people that we are talking about. Secondly, I, uh, want to propose something that if, if sanctioned encampments, um, aren't enough, there's a representative, there's a model that's been done, uh, in the state of Utah where the whole state housed all of their unhoused people and, um, saw a 90% reintegration rate back into society. This is an entire state that is triple the population of, um, San Jose. Created jobs, reduced, uh, drug use, and overall increased taxes for the entire, uh, increased, reduced taxes for the entire population of the state.
Thank you. Nikita Sinha?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nikita Sinha. I'm the Walks San Jose Premier Manager with California Walks. Um, I just wanted to highlight two points. First, regarding the recommendation on creating encampment buffer zones for school safety, the safety of children walking to school depends most on safe pedestrian infrastructure. Traffic cop crashes are the leading cause of death among children nationwide. And unsafe streets, not unhoused people, pose the greatest risk to children's safety. Secondly, the unhoused population is one of the largest groups affected by traffic crashes in San Jose. The county's medical examiner office recently reported that over the past five years, at least 27 unhoused people were killed while walking or biking. Our unhoused neighbors are not a pedestrian sector. They are vulnerable. Please do not resume sweeps and consider traffic safety infrastructure as a piece of the strategy to improve the quality of life for unsheltered individuals. Thank you to staff for your presentation and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beek.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Hopefully it's working now. I just wanted to remind that COVID cases are rising in Europe a bit at this time and we should be wary of that. And I wanted to give a thank you to city staff who, for the past few weeks, have placed, you know, all the trash days, recycling days and trash bin days, Saturday with trash bin days for local neighborhoods. They place that on the agenda for, I think, a very specific reason, top of the idea that there can be good communication between, you know, neighbors and those who are houseless and in local neighborhoods. And I just hope we find ways to do that and keep up those efforts. And, and I hope that we work towards ways of, you know, we're at a time of COVID, I hope we can really work to new ideas out of this time of COVID and, and not be fearful of it. And that takes effort and work. Thanks.
Thank you. Robert Gary?
All right, finally got the message. All right. First of all, I would like to send a message to Jackie Morales Varan. Where in 2014, I told her about sanctioned encampments and her comment to me was, we would never do that. So here we are discussing it. And I think it's a good idea that we do that and that we talk about exactly how to go about doing that. And I have been pushing for self governed encampments where we organize the people and not just throw people in someplace and just let them be treated like animals. Because if you treat people like animals, they act like animals. If you give them the opportunity to be able to step up and actually be responsible, you'll find out that most people take that responsibility very seriously, especially if it involves the safety that they would be getting by being in a sanctioned encampment. And if those people have the ability to vote out somebody who's creating a problem for them, they're going to tend to be much more organized and democratic about how they go about doing things. It is something that I have been promoting for quite some time, over six years, and I think we should continue those conversations. I'm available if anybody wants.
Thank you. Carl Salas? Hey Carl, your device appears to be muted. We're not able to hear you yet because your device still appears to be unmute, Carl. Carl, we'll try to come back to you. If you can just unmute your device, go ahead and raise your hand when you're able to speak and we'll, we'll come right back to you. Chuck Hammerstad? Chuck, we're not able to hear you. Could you please unmute your device? Chuck, we're still not able to hear you. You could push the unmute on your device. Okay, Chuck, we'll try to come back to you. If you could go ahead and raise your hand, if you're able to work that out on your device. Gil Anne Osmer?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. There have been so many wonderful comments tonight. I want to thank everybody, first of all. Secondly, I have been advocating for many years for sanctioned encampments and it's time that we open that up. Every district needs to have a sanctioned encampment in their district. So I'd like to say that the abatement should not be going on. We are abating. You have been abating. I've been to two or three abatements already. They're not fun to watch and the folks living in these camps do not want to be abated. Most of these camps that I go to would love to be a sanctioned encampment. They could run it themselves. They already run the camps. They already have the do's and the don'ts for a lot of the residents and they want to be a safe home. They want to live in their home. They want to be safe and they don't want to be abated. And please listen to most of these folks tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Kai Dunn? Kai, your device appears to be muted right now. So we're not able to hear you just yet. If you could unmute it? Kai, your device is still muted. Okay, Lisa Ann Huber?
Good evening, Mayor Licardo. I'd like to thank you for opening up this meeting to the public. My name is Lisa Ann Huber and I'm also with Agape Silicon Valley. I want to echo what many other advocates for the unhoused have voiced here tonight. And that is, I'm in favor of also sanctioned encampments in the unhoused communities. Although I do appreciate the efforts of what has been done so far, I can tell you that I've seen firsthand the negative impact these sweeps mentally and physically have had on the unhoused. It's simply emphatical to me to even be considering it when there isn't a viable option of where they can go. Instead of kicking them when they're down, so to speak, I'd rather see an effort in helping the unhoused with the bigger issues, which is drug addiction and mental illness. It is not just the responsibility of us as advocates to care for the unhoused and their well-being, but all of us as fellow human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Foa?
Hi, thank you for having us. So I just wanted to comment that, yeah, I think the section housing is a great idea. We can use our resources very strategically and smart and also not having homelessness on our streets, better for our communities, having a place for these unhoused people to be safe and utilize all their medical needs. And it just, it's just really smart of us to just focus our energy in certain areas where they're not lost or communities are harassing them, you know, it's, it's, it's good harmony for all of us. And I think, I applaud you guys for having this effort. It's a great idea. And I think from all communities, from both sides, it'll be very good for all sides. So yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Robert Wright?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm an activist with Julian St. James Neighborhood Association. And lately, we've had a severe problem with encampments on North 17th Street. It got so bad that homeowners were being threatened just for looking at the encampments from their front porch or through their living room window. And there were incidents of violence with hacksaws and baseball bats and even handguns. For future abatements, I ask that a high priority be given to residential streets, especially in cases like North 17th Street, which was out of control and posed a serious threat to health and safety.
Thank you, Robert. Not sure, I think we just lost you. Anon 408?
Hello, I would just like to say to all the citizens of San Jose, not the city council, but to the citizens of San Jose, people have been pushing for this for years and years and they do not do anything. So it is time for us to get out there and organize ourselves. There are many organizations that are out there doing the work with unhoused communities and we need to be out there ourselves because they are not going to do it for us. They do not care for us. They do not work for us. They work for the corporations of our area. These corporations in Silicon Valley not only displace people in our, in our community, but people across the global south. These people are terrorizing our world and destroying our world. We need to step up as the Silicon, people in the Silicon Valley and say no to this and help our unhoused community when they need us and not la la these sweeps to happen. And even these sanctioned encampments, why leave them in encampments when we have so many open apartments and hotels and the rent is going up for people? That is fucking bullshit.
Carl Salas, welcome, Carl.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Thanks, Carl.
The staff plan speaks of not enough housing, but later Sarah Zororte stated that, quote, "Those who refuse housing just moved to an adjacent area." I've watched your abatements. The city offers housing and storage to each person three times before debates. So what's wrong? There's nothing in the city's post-COVID plan that deals with the most destructive and visible unhoused demographic. Those who have alcohol or drug abuse disorders and/or untreated psychiatric disorders, even if offered them housing, they say no. Last week, I was on my own property, one of these unhoused in front of my three-year-old grandson, came up to me and screamed insanely and I quote, "F you, a-hole. Suck my c." I'm going to kill you and your kid. He may live on Cuyahoga Creek, but he was screaming at me on my property. And I contend that it's just not compassionate to let him live in his own filth and defecate in this creek and cause trauma to me and worse, my grandson. Please direct staff to include part of the plan that will deal with these service resistant unhoused. And at the same time, please continue to conduct your abatements in the humane and successful way that I've seen your parks and housing folks work. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Shay, excuse me, she, Feepen? Forgive me if I mispronounced.
Yes, um, I just want people to realize that at any moment, this can be us. Like, we can all be unhoused at any moment. Just, it just takes another recession, it takes another pandemic. I want people to realize that this can be us at, in any minute. And Sam Licardo and the rest of the city council members, I want to say that you guys are fucking weird as hell.
Thank you. You're certainly willing, you're certainly able to express any opposition to any of us or our positions, but no expletives will be tolerated. We'll cut you off. Kai Dunn?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
That was a look at using tiny home, but we keep building tiny home and affordable housing in areas that have a lot of pushback. California has a lot of open hills. I think we should build, manage sanctions encampments on the hill. I sent a letter to you about three weeks ago. Have your team have a chance to review the idea. Anyone in the public want to know more about this idea, contact me at 408-600-5262. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. The person with the phone number, ending 4460?
Yes, good evening, council members and mayor. This is Steve Holmes with South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition. For the past eight years, our work has given us a front row seat to the environmental disaster playing out along our waterways. The city's pre-COVID abatement strategy along our creeks is unsustainable with evictions and cleanups followed by reencampment. We're seeing other cities in California coming to the same conclusion, which has led to the establishment of no camping ordinances along their waterways, increased transitional housing like sanctioned camps, and the development of a long-term plan to achieve trash-free waterways. Last Thursday, we submitted an email to city staff, council members and the mayor titled, "Petition Seeking A New Direction For Our Local Creeks." The proposal includes links to three California cities who have adopted watershed ordinances. Our petition was designed to create a voice for our creeks and is currently endorsed by nearly 3,000 citizens in the community.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for your work with South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition. Brian Parkman?
Hello, my name is Brian Parkman. I live in District Six. I oppose the kind of abatements as they currently stand. They are, in effect, modern day programs, at least as how they look like. If we are going to help people, we can look to a similar program that's been happening in Salt Lake City where we are, people are taking a homes first approach. As an alternative to the sanctioned encampments, we can also do autonomous encampments where you're letting house and people kind of decide their own fates. And you can create something that's been talked about in the city council meetings before, which is creating houses councils that can help monitor things. Thank you.
Thank you. Guadalupe Gonzalez?
Yes.
Welcome, Guadalupe.
Okay. Hi, my name is Guadalupe Gonzalez. I'm here tonight on behalf of the major community. Right now, we have a homeless incumbent at the Lower Seabird Creek between the 280 freeway entrance and Jackson Avenue all the way into San Antonio Street. I'm concerned about the safe and unhealthy environment around our schools. For example, Lee Matz from Middle School. We have twelve schools in our neighborhood and our kids are not safe to return to school and to walk to these schools. We have aggravated physical assaults to residents, sending them to ERs, polluting the creek with human waste and exposing themselves to anyone. That's in our front yards. The situation is creating fear just to walk around the block. So that's why I'm asking the mayor and the city council, like, work with us to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Guadalupe. Kevin Morales?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, so I've been out there helping with the unhoused community and what I've seen in the situations is nothing short of embarrassing on the count of, you know, we're in the richest city, one of the richest cities in California Bay Area. And, you know, what you've seen is an abject failure and the language being used tonight to talk about our neighbors is nothing short of insulting. People don't know the humiliation they go through to, you know, to go through these programs and to try to, so, so to speak, play by the rules. And, you know, I think we're going about this the wrong way. Resources need to be made more accessible. These are people, these aren't animals, you know, they know how to do things themselves, even if they are disturbed. But, uh, yeah, definitely keep that in mind.
Thank you. Jennifer Doherty?
Yes. Hi, good evening. I'm a teacher at Shepherd Middle School in the Alum Rock School District. Thank you for your time tonight. I have, we have witnessed the increase in camps directly across the street from our campus and the increase of overnight vehicles of people living out of their cars. I understand the plight of the homeless and how difficult it is to afford to live in Silicon Valley. But because of the importance of school safety, I have made multiple calls to the city along with sending photos about the illegal dumping that occurs daily along Rough and Ready Road. We strive for a safe return to our campus and need a safe passage for our students walking on campus. Students should not have to counter this on our campus or en route to our campus. I wonder if the Alum Rock School District can work with the city of San Jose to create a no parking zone or a permit parking area to discourage overnight camping around our schools. I wonder if our school board and city officials could prioritize a school safety zone as a policy to ensure a clear passage for students. I know the Tenderloin in San Francisco, they work with a group called Safe Passage who walk with students as they move to and from school to ensure passage.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks to all the members of the community who came out to speak on this important and very difficult topic. So we'll come back to council now for questions. I, I just wanted to start with two very quick questions for Jackie Reagan. I believe, you know, I saw two different numbers, but I think the number that is specific to the city in terms of the work that we have done, I believe, was a little more than 2,000 residents that have been moved into permanent housing in San Jose. Is that accurate over the last year?
Thanks, Mayor. It's, I thought closer to around 1,600.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I'd heard earlier was this number from 1,600, 1,700. And then in the report, I saw very early on, I think it's in the second supplemental, a reference to 2020, I'll find the number. And then even, I was just trying to understand how we were doing in the aggregate. I'll get back to that site in a moment. I, I think we, what we know all around, what we hear from all members of our community is enormous frustration. Those, obviously those who are unhoused are suffering the most. Advocates for those who are unhoused, as well as we heard from teachers today, I've heard from superintendents in just the last few days. I'm in constant conversation with their frustrated about encampments at schools and concerns about safety. We heard from some neighborhood leaders and folks who are involved in creek cleanups, like Deb Kramer and Steve Holmes and many others. And I know this issue of sanctioned encampments continues to come up again and again and again. And I know this issue of sanctioned encampments continues to come up again and again and again. I think I've said in the past, I'd be happy to support it for that council member who finds the site in their district. And I think to date, the only person I know of who's actually successfully done that for any period of time was Councilmember Peralis, and that was a site, of course, that was illegal under the FAA guidelines and ultimately couldn't work in the long run. And so this is really, really hard. I think that is the very difficult thing about sanctioned encampments, which is, if you sanction it, it means you have to make it legal, which means you've got to go through a land use process, and it probably means you need an extensive community process as well, just like we would with any development for affordable housing. We'd need to have extensive community vetting and discussion. And we already have something called SOAR sites, and I believe we have, is it 20 SOAR sites now? Reagan, or I saw originally it was 17, is it 20 now?
It's 16.
It's 16, okay. Again, I'm getting all the numbers wrong, because I keep seeing different numbers in reference to these things. And I have seen numbers saying we have hand washing stations and garbage at 20 sites. I saw that on one of the slides. And so that's not a reference to a SOAR site, that's just a hand washing station. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Nonetheless, we're providing basic services of some kind for bathrooms, hand washing, garbage, in some form between 16 and 20 sites. As a council, we have voted to expand the number of those sites through the budget message that we just passed last week. And I guess the question is, for the Housing Department, given the resources that you're constrained by and your imperative focus, which is trying to get people permanently housed, whether it's 1,600 plus or more, we know that we want it to be much more. Is it a better use of your time to be working with other departments and expanding SOAR sites? Or in going through community processes to identify quote-unquote sanctioned encampments?
Well, you already lost me when you said going through a community process to identify the sanctioned encampments is something, you know, we, the Housing Department went through an extensive process when we asked every council office to identify a site that they were willing to put in front of us to do a bridge housing community. So that's where we actually build a facility, you know, a little unit. And we were unable to identify through the partnership with the council offices any sites. And that left the Housing Department out there trying to identify city-owned facility, you know, city-owned land, having community meetings and really meeting with outraged residents who basically said no. But despite that, we were able to locate two sites that are up and running. But we never would have been able to locate at the speed we did for the emergency interim housing sites, which are, you know, over 300 units right now, without having just been able to select the sites and move forward.
Okay.
A process that will require us to go identify more sites that don't exist and to have community meetings is something at this point, given our workload, would be impossible for us to take on.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. I just want to say, look, I admire the efforts, for example, of Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Peralis, who each proposed having sanctioned encampment sites in their districts. And ultimately, neither site worked for the long term for different reasons. But I really firmly believe that if the idea is to have a place that is safe, where we can provide basic services, we can probably do that much more effectively doing what staff has been doing in identifying 16 SOAR sites plus whatever additional sites we're providing other services at, than going through a process to identify sanctioned encampments. And if we ever were to do such a thing, I would really urge my colleagues to take the leadership of identifying those sites in your own districts, rather than having city staff go through that very wrenching public process, which ultimately, I believe, is, gets us very little. Because if we're going to go through that public process anyway, I'd much rather go build housing for unhoused residents that is dignified and safe, rather than simply a site where there are going to be a lot of tents that we know will be vehemently opposed by any neighborhood. So we do have SOAR sites. Let's take advantage of what seems to be working to the extent that it's providing some safe location and a location that will not result in people being swept. And that way, we can focus our scarce resources on getting people housed. Okay, there were several folks who had their hands raised, and Henry had sent me a list of the order in which they all came up. So the order that Henry told me was, Henry, here we go, Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and actually, I'm going to, just for the purpose of framing this discussion, because I know we all represent different parts of the city. Henry, if you could actually pull up the slides, I have six slides to start. I wanted to show folks particularly what it's like for families in District Seven, which has some areas, some of the city's highest poverty areas, and some of the city's most overcrowded census tracts. And this interestingly overlays with our COVID rates because of overcrowding, because of the high number of essential workers in our city. So this is a student's walk to George Sheracola Senior Elementary in the Rock Springs neighborhood. If you could go to the next slide. Henry, I don't know if you can go to the next slide.
Excuse me, sorry. I didn't realize sharing was paused on my screen. Give me one second here.
Okay.
Realizing. Give me just a second.
That's okay.
Do you want?
There are only six, Mayor, it's super short.
Yeah.
Do you want to say here? I can pull it back up.
Thanks, Henry.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. You could go to the next slide, please. And then this is a student's walk and actually a drop-off area at Rocket Ship Mosaic on the Crete Shand Story, and that's an elementary school. If you could go to the next slide, please. So this is a student's walk to Dahl Elementary in the, in Seven Trees area. If you could go to the next slide. This is nearby the Seven Trees Community Center. Next slide. The Tully Ballfields, which is adjacent to the Tully Library. It's one of only two libraries in District Seven, so kids from, as far as like Santee, this is their library. Next slide. District Seven is also home to the largest number of mobile home parks in the city. And so there are a couple of mobile home parks, you'll see that. So the top slides are on Monterey Road. The other slides are on the other side of Sun Shadow Mobile Home Park. When the fire department goes out to do fire alarm, install fire alarms in mobile home parks, residents are told you have two to five minutes to evacuate because mobile home parks burned down. And I think that's the last slide. Is that right?
That's the last slide, yeah.
Yeah, so that's fine. So I wanted to bring this up to give folks, again, we come from different parts of the city. And I wanted to show what families in just places like District Seven are living with every day, right? When we balance the interests of different populations in the city. This is District Seven. And so, so I had a few questions. First off, Jackie or Reagan, if you could remind us how many folks have been permanently housed and how many folks have been sheltered over the past year? I do think it's something we should shout from the rooftops, because it's, it's, it's pretty huge.
Sure. So in our community plan that ended in, in 2019, we housed 14,000 individuals, and then in 2020, we permanently housed 3,200.
During a pandemic.
Correct. And then the numbers sheltered over the last 12 months are just over 6,000 individuals sheltered in either congregate or non-congregative settings.
Thank you. That's huge. And in the meantime, what folks also may not realize is, well, that work was going on. So District Seven has the county's largest homeless shelter, the county's largest permanent supportive housing development, Renaissance Place, which opened during a pandemic and filled 162-unit permanent supportive housing development during this time. And, and what is our shelter capacity? Does any, I'm not sure if somebody from housing knows our shelter capacity at this point in time? Anybody want to take a guess?
If you give me a moment, I could pull it up. I, I want to say it's a little over 2,000 beds right now.
And that's, so that's what we're using out of the total? Do you know what our percentage, like, what is, is 2,000 what we have open or 2,000 that we've used to date? What's available, I guess, is what I'm trying to get.
Like, how many beds are empty right now?
Right. So like, I'm trying to remember the committee, there was a committee presentation, and so I'm not sure how recent that number is, but it was 65% capacity. And I don't know how accurate that is at this time, so I don't want to make that up, but.
I'm going to throw out an average, and it does vary, but the average utilization is, I want to say around 85%, and that's system-wide. But I don't have an exact number of what that 85% equates to.
And that number tends to go up during the winter months, and it's raining. That's where we see where it reaches much higher capacity levels.
Thank you. And then I had a question about safe parking. Don't we already work with organizations such as Amigos de Guadalupe? I know Franklin McKinley School District and other entities operate private safe parking operations?
Yes, there are other entities, as you mentioned, Amigos de Guadalupe has contracts with the county for safe parking programs. The city is funding safe parking at two city sites right now, Roosevelt and South Side Community Centers.
Okay. Thank you. And I wanted to ask those questions because one of the reasons why the community plan and homelessness was so huge is that we used to manage homelessness for a really long time. And it represented a shift where we went from managing homelessness and ending it. And so, for example, the 162 households that moved into Renaissance Place during a pandemic, many of them came straight from the creek, right? And so that's ending homelessness, and it's using those dollars and those resources to to end it, right, to provide those services. And I had a question about SOAR. Could, and I'm not, I think this is a question for Lee about our COVID funding. Could we possibly expand SOAR to pay the county for placements like detox beds or things like that that would just be for our use? Because SOAR is really, it's different from that, right? It's not a guaranteed placement. So could we use that COVID money to fund those placements with the county?
You know, I, I would say we would have to follow up on that, especially with the new money, since the guidelines aren't released, and we have heard from Treasury that they're going to be flexible, but quite a bit different than the original funding that we got. So I think that would need to be a follow-up item with the council.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is I actually went back, for folks that remember back in October and November 2019, the council talked a lot with mental, about mental and behavioral health with the county. And we talked about things like, yes, we did talk about LPS conservatorship. We did talk about assisted outpatient treatment. We talked about enhanced street outreach and engagement. We talked about establishing a drop-in center, a utilization of a no-wrong-door approach, crisis stabilization in the sobering center, expansion of walk-in shelter beds, expansion of board and care respite and supported housing to increase housing options for seriously mentally ill and duly diagnosed individuals, measures to increase the number and prevent future decline in the number of board and care homes and beds, which do provide permanent supportive housings for persons with mental health disabilities, the creation of a hospital discharge transition team to do outreach and engagement. And, and so we had talked about those things. Obviously, you know, not all of those things are going to be on the table in a pandemic. But if we need to work jointly on a system, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to use COVID funds to pay for some of those placements. Because we, as a city, don't own the mental health and behavioral health system, the county does. And as we are partnering with SOAR, maybe we need to tighten that partnership a little bit more. And so you're asking for feedback, and, and I'm giving it. I also wanted to, to bring up policies. When we talk about homelessness, we are in control of policies that impact homelessness, such as minimum wage, wage theft, the Ellis Act, and other tenant protection policies. For some reason, we only tend to talk about homelessness during the annual homeless report or when we talk about homelessness specifically, when in fact, we discuss many policies as a council that impact people falling into homelessness. So I also wanted to bring that up, because I do think we need to start talking about that. And so before we, so I wanted to just get to what, what PRNS had asked for, from us. So is there a legal definition of a sanctioned encampment? I know the mayor made some comments earlier and has brought this up before, but do we have a legal definition of a sanctioned encampment?
Well, I'll start. Johnson-Saraley Director, Parks, Recreation, and Neighbored Services, again. I'm not aware of one, and to what I've seen, and I'm sure Jackie and Reagan have a better opinion on this, but what I've seen is it really varies depending on where you are and that community kind of makes its own definition. And I can't say that we have one for ours that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Agreed. We, we don't have a legal definition in the City of San Jose.
Thanks. And I, and I bring that up because we talk about other cities and what they're doing. When Oakland voted on their setbacks in sanctioned encampments, they did pull all the staff memos on that. We looked at Denver and other cities, and we're not alone. Every city's trying to figure this out, and they take a vote, and then they don't implement it, because they can't figure it out. So, so the fact is that in the meantime, in our county, we've housed 14,000 folks, and then during a pandemic, housed 3,200 more, right? And managed to shelter 6,000 people during a pandemic, instead of giving false guidance to folks. And I showed those slides earlier, because I have neighborhoods that have public health And I showed those slides earlier because I have neighborhoods that have public health hazards as well because of some of the encampments. We had a fire today on Center Road, which actually shut down, excuse me, Center Road. Some of the neighborhoods in the photos that you saw, the residents who live in those in those apartments and homes who are overcrowded with multiple families living in those homes have had rodents, have had infestations, have had sanitation and sewage issues because they've been dropped off in front of their homes. In addition to fires and public safety issues, particularly in a couple of encampments that I can think of where there have been gunfire and some other issues in those encampments near where families live. And so that's where I, that's why I wanted to bring it up. That's not every encampment, right? It's not every encampment. It is in some, and we should not abate as a first resort or as a last resort as a rule. Sometimes we may need to abate as a first resort, particularly if there are fires being set next to a mobile home park or if there are fires and on story and one-on-one, and people are running out into freeways. To me, that represents a public safety hazard. But do we, should we, and do we abate every encampment? I don't think we should. I think it's unrealistic. I think it's, it just doesn't make sense to do it. Why, why would we do that when we can do outreach, when we can pursue other methods in other encampments? And so this all-or-nothing approach doesn't seem to make sense to me. And I wanted to explain what some of the setbacks that have been brought up. Because this was something that I looked at when Oakland voted on it. Mind you, Oakland has not enacted any of this yet because they can't figure it out. In Oakland, they voted on fifty feet from a home, which is actually across the street, a hundred and fifty feet from a school, which is across a four-lane road. So in those photos that I showed you, those fall at that hundred and fifty feet guideline. So those encampments with, again, with some of the activity that I mentioned earlier happening across the street from an elementary school on a kid's walk to school, that would be sanctioned if we allowed the same setbacks. And I don't think that makes sense. I do think we need some latitude, which is why I shy away from saying this should be the footage. I think that there should be some 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 judgment involved. And I do think that we should prioritize public safety. To me, public safety should be the first thing that we look at on an abatement, on whether or not we're going to abate. Are people running into a freeway because they're encamped on story and one-on-one and setting fires? That's a public safety issue. If there is a large encampment across the street from an elementary school, and there's gunfire, open drug use, and open prostitution in addition to infestations, because this has happened in District Seven, if that is happening across the street from an elementary school, to me, that represents a public safety hazard, and that should take priority. So I, I think it's it's tempting to think that there's one magic bullet that's going to solve everything, that if we just do this one thing, it's going to solve all our problems. And I think that what we know by now is that there isn't, that it's going to take multiple things. So if you're asking for feedback, my feedback is that we that we continue to offer the system, the trash pickup and the handwashing station pickup that just is for our housed residents. We've created this pickup system for our unhoused residents that that continue. I do think that there are circumstances under which we should abate, but that we should not do it as a first resort every time. So with that, I wanted to thank all my colleagues. I wanted to thank Housing Department. I wanted to thank PRNS and all the other folks like Sarah and Rick, and I'm gonna leave people out for setting up, literally setting up a system that normally would have taken years and setting that route system up in a matter of months. I think that while this is a complicated issue, we are doing more than a lot of other cities. We're not looking for that easy answer. And again, my feedback is that we need to prioritize equity in neighborhoods and schools as well. And somehow that gets left out of the equation. And then that's, we use a data-based approach instead of a complaint-based system. So if you have the mayor's cell phone, you can blow up the mayor's cell phone. He's very gracious about it. But that shouldn't be how we resolve our problems. There should be some equity and data in our, based in our decisions. So with that, I actually have a spreadsheet of all the memos and the recommendations. And I'd like to make a motion. So I'd like to move to Councilmember Peralos's memo from February fourth to accept the annual report. I'd like to include Recommendation Two in prioritizing high-impacted locations and utilizing reporting data. And I'd like to pass Mayor's Recommendations One, Two, and Three, and Foley and Cohen's memo, Recommendations One with the amendment of, instead of ask a last resort to add public safety to Recommendation Number One, I'd like to pass, move their Recommendation Number Two and their Recommendation Number Three, although I do believe the mayor's budget message does cover Recommendation Number Three of the Foley and Cohen memo. I'd like to move the man Recommendation Number One. I believe that there's some overlap with man's Recommendation Number Two with what I've already mentioned about schools, prioritizing schools. And I'd like to move man's Recommendation Number Three. And I believe that we need to revisit Recommendation Number Four and not make that decision right now, but revisit it in the future. I'd like to move Councilmember Carrasco's Recommendation Number One. And I've already addressed why not to do a specific setback on her Recommendation Number Two. And I'd like to move Councilmember Carrasco's Recommendation Number Four, and that's the motion.
Okay, let me ask if there's a second. I'm happy to, I think, Councilmember Arenas, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And just for clarification, Mayor, Councilmember Asparza, you said from Councilmember Carrasco's one and four.
Four.
Correct, but not two. Correct, because I mentioned the setbacks. We're still prioritizing schools and child-serving locations. Sure, that's included in the mayor's. Correct, correct. Okay.
Okay, so let me just recite what I think I have here. Recommendation Number Two from Peralos, all three recommendations from my memorandum. Thank you. Recommendations, one, two, and three from Councilmembers Foley and and Cohen, but with the modification on on Recommendation Number One, that it would be for prioritizing public safety. And I believe that a recognition, the Recommendation Number Three is probably redone it with our budget direction last week. From Councilmember Mahan's memorandum, one, two, and three, all three, those three recommendations. And then from Councilmember Carrasco, one and four, for everybody keeping track.
Correct.
So we all got it. That's the motion. All right. Okay, now, Councilmember Peralos had texted me just before, I believe, that Henry was asked to take a photo of the order of the sequence of speakers. Sure enough, Councilmember Peralos had texted me at five fifty-four, I think, that he had to switch devices, and he wanted to keep his place in line. So Councilmember Peralos is actually next, then Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, before the break, I I switched devices. I appreciate keeping me in line there. Just to clarify with Councilmember Asparza, did you move Recommendation Number Two from my February fourth memo, or did you move my entire February fourth memo?
I moved Recommendation One, which was to accept the report, and Recommendation Two from your February fourth memo.
Okay, thank you. The Recommendation Number Two from my February fourth memo was sort of to be following, you know, I think the advocacy, which has already been done. And fortunately, we have a positive response from the county in regards to prioritizing our unhoused community with vaccinations. Maybe I can ask staff if they can respond to that, just to see how that has gone, because we did actually move forward with that advocacy back in early February, and the county did respond and and include the unhoused residents in this next series of vaccinations. So if there's somebody from Housing that can just respond to that, then I'll jump into some of my other comments.
Hi, Councilmember. So vaccines have started. They've started at congregate shelters, and last week they started in encampments. And as of today, I believe approximately seven hundred and sixty-six Josephs have been administered.
And just to make it very clear for our our public, all unhoused folks are now prioritized, correct? It's no longer over a certain age and with.
That's right, all unhoused.
Okay, thank you, and appreciate staff and their advocacy on that and and the county for responding to that. Okay, so to get into some of the the comments here. First off, I'll say thank you to to staff on both the presentations. I think we we have to recognize the the hard work that has been going on. I know that not everybody in our community, and certainly based on the the public comment, would agree. But I know personally, this is something I care deeply about, and I know that our housing staff, our Parks and Rec staff, our beautification team are all people that tremendously care about individuals in our community. And and the work that we have done to be able to help, and as was described, in this very challenging year, we have been able to move swiftly, and we've seen, we've seen the the benefit. As was pointed out by Councilmember Asparza as well, being able to to house over thirty-two hundred people last year. That that is, those are tremendous results. It's just the reality is that the the challenge is so daunting that we don't necessarily see the the positive impact of those unless you actually you know, know the the individuals are are able to to understand it on a really small scale. It's, you know, as as an overall challenge. And we have not seen, as the pictures that Councilman Asparza showed, or really just looking around the city, and especially here in District Three and in District Seven, not seeing the the challenge of encampments look like they're going away or or even shrinking. In fact, the the opposite. And so I think that's really just the challenge for for our community. And it's just the reality of, no matter how good we may be doing over the last few years, and with the community plan to end homelessness, we have a major, major challenge in front of us, and and I believe it's it's not something, as Councilman Asparza said, it's going to be solved with some some, you know, one solution or a magic bullet. My my uncle lived, his, the last place that he lived was in Life Moves Shelter here in in downtown. And and prior to that, spent a lot of time in the streets and and suffered from drug and alcohol addiction, started off with a with a work injury and 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 got addicted to some of the pain medications. And and ended up spending the last few years of his life really on the streets and in shelters and died very young. And and ended up, I think, really being susceptible to to life on the street. Wasn't too much older than than me and and looked as though he could have been forty, fifty years older because of the life that he that he had. And 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 not just that that one story of of my own personal family, but really seeing the individuals that are that are struggling out in in our streets. It it is painstaking, and I am not someone that is too naive to to believe that I couldn't be there one day. Regardless of where any of our lives are at today, and many people that are on the streets today. Nearly all of them, in fact, unless you were truly born into homelessness with the majority of ninety-nine, one point nine percent of individuals that are on our streets, they were housed at one point. Whether it was their own homes that they were living in or renting or living with their families, there were triggers that happen in their lives and and things that displaced them and made them homeless. And and that could truly happen to anyone, and in our futures today, and and that's certainly not something that's lost on me. And I would want to know that my community and my public officials are truly doing everything that they can for, you know, for me and really for for everybody that that is suffering. And so with that is really, I think, why this has been such a priority issue for me. Number one, I can't avoid it, as Councilmember Asparza can. As you see from the data, it is the number one issue challenging our communities here in in District Three and in District Seven. And and we live with that daily, whether it is in and around our own residences or just hearing about it endlessly in regards to the struggles that that are faced in our community. But we also know that it it's not unique to just a few areas, and we know that this is a challenge that exists across the entire city. And as was pointed out, there have been numerous times throughout the years where we have had commitments from this council to to be able to to try and implement some solutions, whether it be sanctioned encampments or bridge housing communities, short-term, long-term solutions. And unfortunately, to to date, we still only see the majority of those solutions occurring in a few places throughout the city, whether it be a lack of of political will, or even more so, what we see is really the pressure from from our communities to to push back against these types of solutions. And and as the mayor stated, and as I have been a proponent for sanctioned encampments for going on five years now, I've also been willing to to put forward locations. And in fact, I I have another location in mind to put forward, hopefully after after today's discussion with our our housing staff and and actually in partnership with the county, should they wish to to partner, as I hope that they would. Where I I struggle to support the direction, the current motion, is that if if we don't actually include some other locations, and to be honest, I don't care if we call them sanctioned encampments or if we call them SOAR sites. If there's some legal challenges for us in regards to a a title of sanctioned encampment, and we want to continue with what we're calling SOAR sites, it's basically the same thing. There's just one major difference, and I've been saying this repeatedly over the last year. The difference is that with what I've been calling sanctioned encampment is The difference is that with what I've been calling sanctioned encampment is we help choose the location. And yes, albeit that is the difficult choice, as Jackie has pointed out. But if we don't do that, the alternative really, and I mentioned this in my latest memo, the alternative is really just abatements without anywhere for somebody to go. I took a look at the suggestions based on where we might prioritize the abatements. Because really, that's what I've seen in the different memos coming forward. It's just a focus on where people shall not encamp. And looking at that and simply just looking along, trying to clear people from our creeks or waterways. 11 of our current 16 largest encampments that are identified as sore sites would be disqualified and we would go and abate them. And so as much as we want to claim that we want to support sore sites and maybe adding more sore sites, we're not suggesting where those sore sites would be. Instead, we're doing the opposite. We're suggesting that we would be closing down the vast majority of those sore sites. That's where I struggle to sort of support any motion that doesn't include an alternative location or alternative locations for where we should be redirecting people to. And I'm fine if we want to call them sore sites and we want to say, well, these are going to be these new sore site locations. And I'm comfortable with prioritizing areas that we think really should be cleared from abatements and actually comfortable with Councilmember Asparza's inclusion of saying public safety should be up there as a priority as well. But what I could not support if we simply are listing off places where we're not going to have encampments, if we're listing strategies of how we're going to do abatements. And if we begin to roll out abatements without actually having alternative sites in mind. And I don't know how we could even support saying that we would have additional sore sites or funding for sore sites if everything that we're suggesting right now is actually going to close the majority of the sore sites and not suggest any new location for another sore site. So that's where I struggle. And I think that even though it is challenging work to try and identify some locations. And as Jackie points out, we have done this before where we have tried to identify the different sites for even bridge housing, and that's been a struggle. In my mind, this is the one opportunity that we haven't had in years because of the fact that we have now had most encampments gone unabated for the past year. This is the opportunity to do something different. This is the opportunity to sort of shift that. And I want to take advantage of that before we simply go back to status quo, which is just abating, identifying places that are off limits for encampment and just constantly going out and shuffling people around from place to place. And so I do have a location. I've actually been in conversation with Supervisor Chavez about it. A location that hopefully we could partner on. I know that we have other potential properties as I was happy to go and stand with Councilmember Davis when we were looking at the Valley Water property. And she was willing to stand up to her community as well to try and relocate Hope Village right there on the border of District 6 and District 3. And unfortunately, the Valley Water Board did not support that. But these locations exist where there are other, you know, maybe other properties that are owned, whether it's Valley Water, VTA, or Caltrans, that I think that we need to be, we need to be investing in time and energy on identifying those before we get back to any such abatement. And so really, that's my concern with the motion is that if we're not including the efforts of trying to identify new locations, and again, you know, we don't have to call them sanctioned, but we just need to identify new locations where we can have this level of support and service in where we're not going to be abating people. If we're only doing the opposite, which is identifying where we will abate people, then I just, I can't support that motion. And so I'm happy to hear from my colleagues first. This was quite a conglomerate of a motion. I won't necessarily ask for an amendment just yet and happy to hear from, again, my colleagues and then maybe come back afterwards.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Arainus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start where Councilwoman Peralis, you ended on your question in terms of identifying additional sites. I agree with you that there has to be that conversation. And we can't leave it up to our community to decide for us because my guess is going to be that District 7 is going to take all of those sites. Because that's typically where we want to put all of these unhoused communities and where they have been and where some affordable housing and, you know, just the different types of housing. And so I think there has to be a conversation among all of us to say, you know, there isn't a district that gets to decide and say no. There just isn't. We're not going to continue with redlining either. Where, I mean, if at this point, we are in such hot water with this conversation about opportunity housing, where we're talking about fourplexes and duplexes. And people are treating it and our planning commissioner is, you know, having this misinformation about this. And people are in uproar about it. I can't imagine if we leave it up to our districts to decide, they'll say absolutely no. So I think there needs to be a conversation among all of us to say there needs to be at least one site in each district. Come up with two different locations, but one of the two locations is going to have to work. I'm going to say that in my district, we tried to have a safe parking at a county land. It just, for, you know, for many different reasons, it just didn't work. And I'm more than happy to explore tiny homes and more than happy to explore. There is a sore site. I'm sure that we could probably explore another site in our district as well. And like, unlike you, Councilwoman Peralis, I think it's just a matter of semantics. And whether we call it sore or whether we call it sanctioned encampments, it's the same thing, except we're allowing folks to choose the site versus us directing that site. And so, and we'll continue to have the same issues in terms of our waterways. So I think that we do need to continue this conversation. I don't know if necessarily this is the time to do this. You know, I'm open to hearing from the rest of our council colleagues on this. But I do think that we need to, you know, put a flag and and figure this piece out because we've been toying with this idea for many years. And there's some council members who got a lot of flack from it. But I don't think that we should, because of that, I don't think we should shy away from it. I don't think that, I think this is the right thing to do. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly what the answer is. Because if we do, if we say sanctioned encampment or whatever we want to call it is over here, that space is empty, it'll fill back up. Right? People will, there's enough poverty in this city that it will fill back up. And so do we want to just, at the very least, maintain the sites that are full and manage them with, you know, all of the services that the SOR program provides, like toilets and showers and trash pickup, which is the alternative, which is what we've been doing. And I've got to say that that has been working in my district. I'm sure that you have more, you and Councilmember Asparza have much more experience with this in terms of having additional sites in your respective districts. And so, you know, I will always really heed the advice of those folks who have more experience than I do with the unhoused community and follow the lead of those who I would call are professionals and are experts like Jackie and Reagan to lead that discussion as well. So I would like to hear from staff at one point or another to give us their feedback about about what the answer is, maybe have scheduled agendas on a separate conversation to talk about the SOR programs. And I don't know if maybe an upcoming budget. And we can shape it the way that we want to shape it and we can call it whatever it is that we want. But I agree with you, we do need to be a little, we need to move forward with this idea. So I'll leave it at that. I don't know what the answer is because whether we call it sanctioned encampments or not, or call it sore programs. The problem is, is we'll have to abate if we want those waterways, to be clear. And an abatement is not, you know, from what I understand and what Councilmember Asparza outlined in her motion is that, that's not the first, you know, that's not the first thing that we want to do. We don't really use abatement to enforce clearance of an area. And we would have to do a lot of abatement around waterways. Just extreme abatement around waterways. I just don't know how that would look. And I don't know what the end results would be because I feel like it's, it'll be cyclical. It'll be empty for a minute and then people will come back and then we'll have to abate. And then, you know, over and over, the same, the same story you've been hearing from many of our staff who actually do this, this very difficult work. So whether it's today or a separate day, I do, I do agree with you. We do need to move forward and at some point or another, identify some additional sites. And I'm glad that you and Supervisor Chavez have agreed to consider winning your districts. So I'm going to move away from that for a moment because I am supportive, obviously, I seconded that motion. And I want to talk about some of, one, before I talk about a concern that I have, I do want to say to Reagan and Jackie, just, this is a lot of success as reflected in this report. It, you know, it's braided through all of this report. It's hard to miss all the great work that's being done. I mean, just the numbers alone are significantly different from what 2019 has been. And I think in a crisis, this is what you all do and you produce and you support. And so I want to just thank you for that. And Jackie, I know you've been just absolutely understanding of the needs of our families that are out there. So I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate the focus that you've had as of late for our families. But I will include a concern that I have around Downtown Streets Team. When I read the report, it said that they only served eight, nine clients, which is 14% of its goal. This is for the whole fiscal year 2019 to 2020. So that means six months of 2019 when there wasn't any COVID impact to our services. And then, of course, some months of 2020 that didn't have some impact. And as of March, March to June, of course, it had COVID impact. So why would we only have, I don't know if you've got the whole story. Maybe you could share with me how this happened. Because the effectiveness of the program meeting its goals was 37% due to challenges outlined, which basically it was just, they said, the pandemic hit, the pandemic hit in March of 2020. And this was, this contract was started in July of 2019. So from what, from 37%, I think they divided it into eight, not nine. And so that would be three people that probably retained employment.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'm gonna, I think, enlist the help of Kelly, who's our homeless response manager, who probably more familiar with the details of this particular contract.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. As it was described to me, Downtown Streets Team did have some staff turnover, quite a bit of staff turnover. And that was a big reason why they couldn't meet the numbers. There was, there were some issues with gaining some partnerships with employment employers. They had a slew of challenges and barriers. And as a result, we put this money out to bid and looked at looked at different, a different strategy for this CDPG money and how we were going to approach our workforce development project. And we did, we did select two new organizations to operate this function.
And I would just add the workforce piece on our, on this particular team in terms of addressing it in the homeless context has been a challenge, frankly, to begin with. As in our permanent supportive housing, we didn't have a permanent supportive housing developer in San Jose when we started this work. Even though we had the best affordable housing developers in the country, they were not wanting to build a permanent supportive housing. And the same is true, I think, on the issue of how do you transition people back into jobs, help people to build their skills, especially in this, in our environment. We haven't really had somebody who specializes to the degree of wanting to focus on this population and their specific needs in the way that we need them to. And so it's really taken trying to find additional providers who want to work in this sphere in order for us to build capacity within the system to actually have a successful job training workforce development program. So, you know, we believe the RFP was successful in identifying some new players in this work and are feeling very hopeful that we can achieve much better results. But if nothing else, it's a learning experience and we'll continue to iterate and improve on it.
Great, thank you. And, you know, it would also just make me really hesitant about continuing to rely on an agency that hasn't been able to excel. And I understand this is, this is the workforce development piece that they, that they might have not excelled in. And I'm glad that you put this out to bid, that you have now two new, identified new partners. I would still continue to be concerned about this staff turnover because I don't know if it's reflective in all of their organization. And, you know, the other piece of this is that they've been in some investigative reports in the media in terms of of employees and conduct and wages. And so, you know, I would want us to really vet this agency through our city attorney to make sure that they're the type of agency that we want to continue to see being contracted in the city. I have questions about it. I'm not sure that, that they are. And I know that this is in the mayor's budget. And because they're just in the mayor's budget doesn't mean that we get to contract with them. I think we have to vet them a bit more and sort this piece out. And so I would ask Nora for us to, for you to help us take a look at some of the issues that they've been dealing with. And to see if this is something, you know, that I'm sure there's some ethical compliances or duties that we ask of our contractors.
Councilmember Arainus, could I just speak briefly to the issue of what's in my budget? Because I believe I've Because I I believe I've identified them in goodwill as being nonprofits that we worked with on this San Jose Bridge program. I think that's you're referring to. Is that right? Yeah, the the direction is merely to expand the program, but obviously, the issue of RFPs, who exactly gets the contract is still, of course, subject to all the standard legal processes that staff goes through. So I I don't think we've ever had a mayor's budget message that's picked the pick the contractor or the bidder. That's that's up to staff.
No, I I understand that. I just, I want us to also be careful about continuing to use them. If their staffing issues, if their wages, the the issues with wages, if there are issues with sexual harassment and inappropriate conduct in the workplace are present. And that we don't ignore what some of these investigative reporters have been putting out in into the public sphere, that we acknowledge it and that we vet it. And if it if it's, you know, if it's untrue, or if if it satisfies whatever ethical compliance that that we have in our contract, then so be it. But I just don't want it to be another year where we don't consider it.
And were you looking for a response from the city attorney or from staff?
Yes, I was looking for a response from Nora. Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. We can certainly work with staff and review that issue.
Perfect. I I appreciate that. The the other piece is I really appreciate the the motel voucher program and that shift from safe parking for our families into the motel vouchers. I think that's really worked for for our families, and I just want to thank you for that. I also am hoping that maybe you can disaggregate in the future the ports in terms of how many families and how many children we've served. I want to shout it from the rooftop. So and I want to just be accurate about those numbers. So if we can get it in the future, that would be wonderful. And 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 that and and the the other pieces, you know, the motel voucher, I was really impressed with the number of children that were 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 being served. I think in a in a previous report where it delineated delineated that. And I just wanted to acknowledge that you've been working with the McKinney Bento programs within all of the school systems that identify are are there to help families, support families who have self identified as homeless. And so this really great work and partnership with other systems to make sure that we capture some of these children that I have been saying for a couple of years. We don't see them because they're couch surfing, right? We don't see them because moms and dads want to keep them safe, and they want to keep their families together. And so I I really just want to commend you for the work that you're doing. That is wasn't maybe typical or wasn't part of your everyday thing that you did. And so I really want to thank you for that, because it means a lot of these children get to have the support. And oh, and before I get emotional, I'm just going to say I that is the end of my comments, but I just really want to thank you. Because I know that a lot of our families, it just means so much to them to to be able to have the support network within our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayhem.
Thanks, Mayor. Where where to begin? Thank you to staff, housing and PR and S staff who've done just a tremendous job over the past year. And I thought the presentations were impressive and and very heartening despite the challenges we face. And I have to give Neil a shout out for the core values he highlighted. I really liked the build measure and learn with data and be bold and iterate. And, you know, those values give me some some hope that we can improve the sadly, the trajectory we're on, which isn't isn't great, despite all the good work staff's been doing. Also, I want to thank Councilmember Sparsa for doing a heavy lifting there and pointing out all those recommendations. And I thought making a very cogent argument for why that's the package that should move forward. And I think it highlighted for me just the high degree of overlap we all have. There's there's certainly no silver bullet here. You know, there's there's it. This is not easy, and I think we're generally aligned. I think we're kind of talking about emphasis and maybe some some areas where we might want to experiment and take some risks, frankly. And that's kind of the conversation I think we're having. Of course, we're not spending a lot of time tonight talking about the 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 real solution, as I think Councilmember Sparsa pointed out, which is really housing production. We've got to build a lot more housing of all types, and that's kind of beyond the scope of any action we'd take tonight. But certainly, we know we need a lot more housing, and I would argue of all kinds, you know, market rate, permanent supportive, emergency, probably shelter beds, facilities for mental health and addiction treatment. There's so much there. And I also, I liked the list of other strategies related to that. So boarding care and that kind of disappearing locally and and, you know, expanded services for mental health and addiction. So I, you know, I won't get into that. I will offline ask Councilmember Sparsa for that list that she ran through quickly, because it sounded like the right list of strategies. I guess, in the spirit of focusing and trying to move us on here. You know, I've I've been kind of advocating for services and setbacks. And I think, as the mayor said, his budget memo really covers services. I'm very interested to see over the next couple of months how that conversation evolves. To what level can we get service delivery to our unhoused residents for their benefit? And for the broader benefit of the community? What, you know, how do we quantify the cost, the the service level we can deliver, and what that means for our community? I think there's a lot to dig in on there, a ton of great work done. But to me, that should be an emphasis, because people living on our street should not be living in in total squalor. And obviously, the whole community and our environment is better off if we can increase investments in sanitation, trash removal, etc. So I think that's been covered. We don't disagree on that. On the setbacks front, you know, my thinking here is that maybe setbacks, despite the challenges, maybe a better approach than sanctioning camp. So I think I'm cognizant of the challenges the mayor's outlined around identifying a specific space and saying we're going to legally state that you can be here, and then all the obligations and risks that come along with that. Now, I'm I'm open to that in concept, as I think everybody has said that they kind of are. And so I'll come back to that. But but I think starting with setbacks may be a simpler way to back into better managing and supporting the encampments that do exist. And so I would advocate, and I think others have kind of mentioned this idea, that we start really small, unlike what Oakland's trying to pull off, which I agree is probably just not feasible. Picking one institution, let's say, schools, picking a very, and and I agree with deferring to staff on what the setback should be. And taking that that approach as an experiment, frankly, saying, let's see, let's see what what it takes to implement. Let's see if it actually improves conditions for our entire community, including our unhoused residents. Let's see what the staff cost is. Let's see what the unintended consequences are. Let's see if this is helpful or not. My thought process on it is, if we can start to identify some of those setbacks, it may over time reduce the number of areas and types of situations we have to respond to, and it may ultimately increase efficiency of service delivery, because some of our encampments that exist outside of those setbacks would be a little bit larger. But there are no doubt challenges and risks there. I totally acknowledge that. And to try to implement setbacks all at once on a variety of institutions probably won't work. I'd also offer that maybe for our creeks, where we've already seen huge environmental degradation, we've lost lawsuits that are very expensive. You know, we're not going to a hundred foot, two hundred foot setback, which isn't feasible. But maybe, and again, I don't know if this will work, maybe fifty feet would reduce the amount of trash going into the creek, but still allow people to to basically live where they are. And I don't know. I mean, I've walked along our creeks recently. There are literally encampments right on the embankment where the trash is just falling down into the water. So maybe, again, incrementally, iteratively, looking at data, listening to what staff's experience on the ground, listening to our unhoused residents. I'm just pushing for kind of incremental improvements in our policies. And it feels to me like setbacks are a heck of a lot more feasible to start with than start quickly moving on than trying to sanction a specific encampment. That being said, I think to Councilmember Peralos's point, if we have a willing partner in the county, if we identify a site, if we can use it as a pilot for testing joint service delivery with the county, innovative models of of management, getting unhoused residents involved in the management of the encampment, lowering costs while improving conditions, I'm certainly open to that kind of pilot. I think the mayor's laid out some of those challenges, and I'm not discounting them at all. And, you know, offline, I'm happy to look at locations and land and partnering with with other outside agencies in District 10 as well. I don't think it's easy. I think that's why I'm more interested in starting with setbacks versus sanctioning campments. But I don't think it has to be either or. They're not mutually exclusive. I just think one's a lot easier, and we could start learning and trying things, and maybe we'll decide it doesn't work. Maybe neither strategy works. Either way, definitely believe in increasing services, because while housing is the long term correct solution, we can't not manage what's going on in the streets every day. And I know we've been doing more, but we're going to have to do a lot more. So that's I don't have an addition or amendment to the motion, but I just wanted to lay out a little bit of of my thought press on process on this at this point. So I will leave it there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, thank you. And thanks, everyone, for, I think, a productive discussion tonight. I want to thank staff for some great presentations and some thoughtfulness that went into that goes into all the work that they do with our community. You know, there's a lot. There was a lot of caring in that, and I appreciate that. That's what we really should be about, caring about our entire community, caring about those who are unhoused, finding ways to be compassionate. I actually want to add add one other success story in there. You know, we were just looking recently at the success of the first bridge housing location, which it's indeed, we say it's in District Four, but I know it's across the street from District Four, so it's officially in District Three. But from what I from what we've just learned, one hundred seventy two percent of people who have been placed in that bridge housing site have been moved to permanent housing within one hundred twenty days. It's a very good success story, and it shows that this can work and that we can find locations for people and and move them into permanent solutions by having places like this. And, you know, back to Jackie's point from before, it was very hard to beginning to find locations for this. It was very hard to find community support for these kind of things. But I think I do think several things have changed since the last time we tried it. One is that we have some proof of success of a site now. The other is that we that there's a there's a much bigger current situation with homelessness in communities where so that people now say the choices between finding locations in our district or having what the current situation in our neighborhoods. And so I do think that that you know, I'm personally willing, back to the Councilmember Raines asked in the question, I'm I'm very willing and ready to go talk to my community about locations and and find places. And I think, as we said, every district needs to have them. What we're hearing from residents and what we heard from a lot of our advocates tonight is people aren't willing to relocate across the city, right? They they live in a district. They live near where they where their home was. They they want to stay close to their families or their connections to the community. And so we need locations that are that are all across the city, because we're not going to find a central sanctioned location and convince people to move to those locations and stay there. So this has to be a citywide solution. So I think we have to keep that in mind. Back to the question about sanctioning campments. You know, I get a little bit lost in the in the semantic discussion, I think. I mean, in my mind, and that's why, you know, one of the items of memo that Councilwoman Foley and I put out was about expanding current sore locations and finding more sore locations. In my mind, once you're picking, you're picking and providing services to a sore location, in some sense, you have a sanctioned encampment. You know, it may not be sanctioned in a legal sense. It may not be exactly what mayor is is concerned about, but you provided hygiene dumpsters and 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 resources at that camp. In some sense, you 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 have a de facto sanctioned encampment. That's what I think of when I'm thinking of sanctioning campments, and maybe we're talking it across across each other. But finding those additional locations to provide services will will improve the situation for our neighborhoods. When I talk to folks in camps, they, you know, many of them will say, if we had a dumpster here, we'd use it, right? And and we're not providing that in enough places across the city, and it's got to be cheaper and safer for all of us if we provided more of those locations. So that's why the memo that we put out talks about finding more locations for those kinds of services. And and that would be that would be the first step before the last resort of abatement in certain situations. And I do thank Councilmember Asparza for adding the word safety. I when we when we drafted a memo, we tried to make that point that you made about that being the first thing. And I, you know, we talked about posing a hazard to the health of unhoused residents, and I guess we meant health and safety. So I'm glad you put that that term there. That, to me, is the is the primary objective here is locations that pose safety hazard, health hazard are first. You know, in terms of of the places that we have to be concerned about, and may have to abate when we rise to that level. And in addition to the environmental impacts in creeks and waterways. I I'm a little, I the only thing I want to say is I'm a little concerned. I I've been a little bit this focus on schools first is a little bit strange to me. I mean, I know that it's important, but, you know, we have families who are bringing their kids to parks, who have encampments near their homes, who are experiencing the same situation. So to me, it's a case by case. In some places, in some cases, it'll be schools that are a priority in some districts. In some areas of the city, it'll be other kinds of places. But to me, we need to be using those screening criteria, health and safety and hazards for the community that in some cases, maybe school, in some cases, maybe other things. And that's why our memo kind of talks about these locations more generally and not specifically about any type of 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 location over any other. And so I had one other, I think that that covers most of the points I want to make. I do think it's important for us to to be aware of what's going on in each of our districts and find and find locations that are a problem. I was going to just mention, I know Councilmember Asparza talked about fires. The big issue in our district are the encampments that are right behind neighborhoods, right behind people's backyards. We have regularly tree fires right behind people's houses that are putting our communities at risk. Those are the kind of situations that we need to be looking at, whether it's near mobile home parks, which are a big issue for fires or near residences where where fires are being set. So to me, those kinds of health and safety issues are important to our district, but we need to first locate the locations where we can provide services where people are and and offer others to potentially relocate there, because if abatement shouldn't just be chasing people away, we have to have a place for them. So that's so that's that's all. I will support the obviously support the motion. I think it's pretty comprehensive. Again, we have no I don't think any of us can sit here and say what we're doing here will solve the problem. But I think that if we focus on a lot of these issues and work collectively, we can we can get a better handle on it as we build more housing, as we find more locations for people to be temporarily housed. And so I'm excited about the fact that we've kind of worked together and with a whole bunch of memos and the Councilmembers as far as Councilmember Asparza's amazing spreadsheet, we got it all together and and I look forward to voting for this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. I really appreciate the conversation we're having around this this issue, this really important issue. And first, I want to thank staff for your presentation. Reagan, it's true, it's clear that your heart and passion is really directed towards helping the unhoused and finding them and treating them with respect and humanity. That really came through in your report, and it touched me deeply. Neil and your team, the Beautify San Jose team is also also very dedicated in helping make our communities better for all involved, both the unhoused and the housed and keeping everybody safe and protected. So I appreciate the both of the staff reports and all all that you had to say and all the and Jackie and all of the data that you had as well. I also want to thank the community members who stayed with us and spoke with such heart and passion over the issue of helping the unhoused. I I truly listened to all of your words, and I think the council is really want clearly by all of the memos wants to find a solution, but there isn't an easy fix. But hence, all of the different discussion around sanctioning campments or sore sites or schools or even abatements as a as schools or even abatements as a, as a last resort. But I think we're all, this conversation has progressed, progressed in the two plus years I've been on council where we didn't even want to use the word in sanct, sanctioned encampment in public and now we are. So I don't know if that's a solution either, but it is a place and a direction that makes sense at this time. We want, and clearly by our priority setting session last week, where the number one priority item was the merger of the two housing, unhoused housing, housing items that Councilmember Mahan and myself put forward. It received 10 of 11 votes. So that 10 out of 11, that's pretty impressive. And that shows the focus of the council on trying to get a handle on, on unhou, on the unhoused. And that means treating them with respect, treating them humanely, but also being concerned about the effects on the neighbors nearby where fires may be causing them concerns and, and very serious concerns near senior, senior mobile home parts, or like Councilmember Cohen just mentioned, I have a lot of encampments right on the other side of retaining walls and near, right next to residences who are very, very concerned about that. So we need to make sure that whether it's more sore sites, whether it's sanctioned encampments that we provide bathroom facilities, showers, trash pickup services and supportive services. But we shouldn't lose sight that one way we can get, we can help start to move out of this is by building more housing. And I just want to mention that I know you had, in the memo was staff's memo, there was a list of many affordable housing projects, but there's five that are missing from District 9. In District 9 alone, we have five affordable housing projects, one approved and almost ready to break ground. And the rest are really close for a total of 667 housing units. And some of those are supportive housing units. So it's, it's really exciting that District 9 is having a lot of affordable housing come in, come to its area. And I agree that with Councilmember Peralis, that each district should locate an area for sanctioned encampment. And I too have a, a site in mind. I need to vet it out a little bit before I make it public or before I approach the individual, the people who own the, the site, but it would be a good location. And truly, I know Jackie, you don't want to do the community outreach. I know where we've been with the community route outreach in District 9 way before I was a council member, when Bridge Housing was, was a thing. But I think times have changed. I think COVID has shed a light on an issue that was more hidden or more, that before COVID, I think our residents tried to ignore. But now with COVID, there's, there's no way we can ignore the impact of the, of our unhoused neighbors and how we need to help them and help take care of them. So I, I accept Councilmember Peralis's challenge to try and locate a site. I don't know if I'll be successful either, but outreach will be really important. That's really critical in District 9. And I may get a lot of pushback, but I think it really is important that every district try to do its part as it, as it relates to affordable housing, supportive housing and sanctioned encampments. I thank you, Councilmember Peralis for, Peralis, Asparza, for your spreadsheet and putting together all of the memos and for including Councilmember Cohen's in mine. I think we're in the right direction. Have we found the solution yet that tomorrow we can snap our fingers and it's over? No. This is going to take a lot of work, but I think we're moving closer in a unified direction than we have been in the couple of years that I've been here. With that, I will conclude my comments and just thank you all for showing your compassion and your heart and understanding and humanity for the unhoused and for our housed residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
I didn't, I didn't quite hear if, was that me or was that Councilmember Carrasco?
I was trying to call your name. You know, I should not have though. It looks like Councilman Carrasco is in front of you.
She was first.
That's my mistake. I should have called Councilman Carrasco. Thank you.
You broke up a little bit as we were talking, so I apologize.
Thank you, Councilman Carrasco.
Thank you. Wonderful conversation and I, I appreciate it. As you can see, so much public interest because, because we are a city that cares. Which is a wonderful thing as we're dealing with COVID and, and soon we'll be dealing with how we recover and how we support families. You know, I, I, I'm heartened by the, the kind of support that's coming out today for our, our houseless population. And, and of course, you know, we know that a lot of our families currently because of the shutdown and the economy, a lot of folks are right on the verge. They're just hanging by, by a thread. And let's hope that we don't continue to see those numbers rise. But I do have a great concern that we'll, we'll see some families lose their, their, their homes because of what's happened over the last 12 months at this point, right? That's my dog. And, and so, so I'll, I'll make a very quick, Councilmember Asparza, thank you for, for doing that slide. I think we're all very relieved that we weren't having to shuffle through all our papers because I was shuffling through all of the memos, trying to merge them all together. And thank you for including some of my items. I understand that the setback may be difficult to define. The only concern I have regarding that is in not, I guess in defining the setback, it defines us too much. But in not defining the setback, I'm concerned in terms of how we then look at these sensitive areas and how we put a, a, that equity lens that's becoming so important to us. And we're starting to really understand why it's so important. I, I will tell you, you know, I, I submitted the memo at the last minute. I didn't think it was going to get posted. It's there for your viewing. But I have a concern. Of course, I represent the Alum Rock School District. It has faced many, many challenges, still trying to figure out how they're going to reopen, children that weren't connected due to the digital divide. We had to invest in the infrastructure in order to help our kiddos. And now we have situations in this district where it's becoming very difficult for our superintendent to consider opening backup because there is a, a, a perceived or a real danger, whatever the situation happens to be, it is a situation that poses some, some safety concerns. As you heard, one of the trustees, Andres Quintero, who called in in support of the mayor's memo because we have these situations. So, so I just wanted to ask if we don't, if we don't put in a very clear defined setback, and I understand the reasonings for that as Councilmember Asparza explained just a minute ago. But then how do we then start to create a, that buffer zone that I think is really important in some of these sensitive areas? I don't know who can respond to that. Did I freeze up?
No. Councilmember, this is Neil from, I can take a stab, you know, at that. You know, I think the effort that we've learned and what we're doing with Beautify, and I think warrants, you know, continued work on this. I think there's, you know, an effort that our team has been doing to, you know, to map things out, to take a look at things and to understand kind of what makes things work and what are the challenges are. And so, you know, I think there's some opportunity to maybe, you know, aligning it to kind of what Councilmember Mahan said, test out some areas and look at some focus areas. I think right now, the way the teams were looking at it, you know, an overall buffer around all schools, I think would be really tough to do. But you know, there's ways we can look at some more specific pilots, you know, look at focused areas in more, in most impacted neighborhoods. Maybe some sections, you know, in D3 or D7 or even, you know, D5 where there's a few schools that we could test out, you know, a buffer and see how it affects the surrounding neighborhoods. You know, because what everyone has said here, one of our, our challenges is, you know, when you move abatements, they're going around the corner into other parts of the neighborhood, right? And 150-foot buffer stops at 150 feet and there's 152 feet. And then what? So we don't want that to limit us, but we do, I think, would need time to look at different solutions and try different things. You know, I mean, you know, the one thing that we, as we as a department are looking at this and working with our, our partners in the EOC, I mean, you know, we know this isn't going to be, we're not making heroes and champions out of this. You know, this is a lot of hard work and but I think our attempt is going to be to work with our partners in the city and other jurisdictions to try to test something out. Because the conversation I think the council members are having here is, you know, we're moving things forward. Someone mentioned, you know, the, the tiny homes effort, hard conversation a few years ago. There's, they're here in our communities now. And they've been successful. We can take another step forward again, right? So I think in that mode, looking at identifying some maybe appropriate buffers that, again, we as staff have to be able to manage. We're still dealing and working inside COVID response. So I think it's a challenge for us. And you know, setting forward to where we will be in the next fiscal year, you know, with the budget proposed and everything going forward, I think will set us up well, if, if, you know, if the resources that are being proposed are funded. I think I'll, I'll end there with that attempt.
Okay.
Councilmember Carrasco, if I could just add something, you made reference to Alum Rock. They actually voted tonight to set an opening date for their schools in April.
Sam?
I, I think Councilmember Carrasco, I'm sorry. You had the floor.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I was talking and saying some really great things and none of you could hear me, but I'll try it again. I'm glad that they voted and, and, and hope that we can continue to collaborate with the district. As you know, we have a lot of, a lot of schools within close vicinity of each other. Many of the children in my district, you know, are, you know, either take mass transport or they walk to school. But they, you know, I've seen them sometimes walk right next to encampments. And I've never thought that it was a great idea or that it was necessarily safe for children. And it's not that, that I, I think that our houseless population all pose a danger, but some of these folks who are dealing with mental health issues or who are dealing with addictions and they're in the middle of their high. You know, can, we, we've seen some behaviors that are just not healthy for our kiddos. So so I'll, I'll leave it at that. The other question that I had, and maybe the vaccination team might have a response for me. But you know, when we're thinking of vaccinating our, our folks who, who, who now we're prioritizing and, and you said that every single person who is houseless is priority now. I don't know how well we can coordinate, but given the fact that it sounds like it's very difficult to go and find them again for that second dose, whether it's because they've been moved or they move themselves, or whatever the reasons are. I think we really should try to figure out how to coordinate with the county so that these folks get the Johnson and Johnson shot, which is the one dose versus two doses. And I know that that wasn't a possibility before, but, but if truly we're going to, to be prioritizing this community because of the risks and dangers that, that they face, I think J and J is probably the best option for them. And I don't know if there's a way that we can go ahead and coordinate that. And have we even thought about that?
Hi, Councilmember Carrasco, this is Reagan. I'll make an attempt at answering that. Certainly for encampments, Johnson and Johnson is the preferred vaccination. My understanding is we are still at a point in the pandemic where supply is limited of all vaccine types, not just Johnson and Johnson. But what V H H P is doing is visiting our motels, our congregate shelters and encampments. They also have an outreach team and a backpack medicine team that can help clients schedule an appointment at clinics if an unhoused person is willing and able to go to one of the many clinics in our community. They, people can also call our shelter hotline to get assistance scheduling an appointment for a vaccine. We just started last week vaccinating at encampments. So we don't have the data yet on second doses. And are we able to reach the, the same person for that second dose?
So, so let me just, let me just say the following, because I think that sometimes, you know, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert, nor I do I pretend to be in any way. And I tread on, on these issues very lightly. Trust me, because I know that many have worked much closer to these communities than I ever have. But what I do know is that on a good day, you know, if I'm not reminded, I'll miss my own kids vaccination deadlines, you know? I've got four of them. Try and juggle that, you know, in a household. And at that time, I was, you know, also taking care of two ailing parents, one that was, you know, passing from other complications. And so, so life gets in the way of, of the things that you know you have to do. And so if we know that this is already a very, they have very complicated lives and it's complicated to find them. And I know that we have a shortage. I, I'm just going to put it out there once, once again, because we can put all these measures in place. We can put hotlines. We can reserve vaccination appointments, but getting people there. But if we're already going to the encampment, we got them in, in our, our, our bullseye in the moment. I would do everything and anything possible to try and get the J and J to this community in particular. Because if you don't find them again to give them that second dose, I don't even know what the, what the window opportunity is after you get that first dose, how much grace period you have. But I don't think it's, 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 you know, it's great. So if the vaccination team that we have is, is responsible for coordinating with the county, I would say that this has to be a, a community that has to have the J and J and, and done at the encampment. That's, that's my suggestion. So with that, I'll, I'll just go ahead and leave it at that. Well, the last question I have is, you know, if we're looking also at RVs and, and moving RVs, we, you know, I, I'm glad that we're finally talking about sanctioned encampments. And we have to start talking also about where we're, we're going to be moving RVs because we can't just have RVs, you know, cruising our blocks, trying to find another space after we've moved them because they happen to be in sensitive spots as well. So we need to have that conversation as well. And we need to look to see where we can safely park them. And, and of course, Reagan, you, you probably have the statistics and the data on what cities have been doing a successful job. But you know, and I say that as, as I see several RVs parked right outside of my house at this moment. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Menes?
Thank you so much. I'm going to try to talk a little quick because I know we don't have a lot of time. Let me just first say that the, a lot of what's been said, I agree with. I appreciated all the comments and everything that Councilmember Asparza said, especially a few things that came to my Uh, especially a few things that came to mind is when she mentioned some of the underlying, uh, things that fuel homelessness that are clearly outlined in the new plan to end homelessness. I think, uh, we need to keep those in mind as we go about discussing different policy issues. Everything from tenant protections to even minimum wage and things of that nature, right? How, how that all sort of plays into this, this, uh, this whole situation. So I thought that was important to note. I also just want to, you know, I think we've all acknowledged that, that, that it seems like District Three, well, it's very apparent that District Three and District Seven bear the brunt of some of these issues and, and appreciate the photos that were shown. I've seen those myself and, uh, yeah, i- i- it's unfortunate that the things have gotten to where they've gotten. The other thing I, I also want to say is I think, uh, just all the comments, what they do for me is really bring to mind again and again, the, 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 just the inherent tension between obviously the humanity of the people living on the streets, uh, and, and their, uh, the challenges they face, uh, i- i- in that tension as it relates to the folks, the housed folks that we represent, right? The desire a clean and in their mind a safe neighborhood. And so, uh, these are very challenging issues that, uh, I wasn't expecting personally that we were going to move in, move them forward drastically during the course of this conversation. But, uh, I'm glad that, uh, some, some of this is being said and sort of brought to the surface. Um, so I just have three questions. The first one is, uh, you know, there were some, um, advocates that have mentioned time and again about self-governed sort of sanctioning campments. And so what I'm curious about, maybe staff or anyone that thinks they can chime in on this is, is it correct to assume that some of the encampments that are sort of, that, that exist currently because we haven't been abating? Uh, are those essentially self-governed at the present time? I mean, is that, I'm trying to understand sort of what the difference would be.
I'm going to jump in because, um, I've been sitting here thinking about this whole question of, you know, is there any difference between SOAR and sanctioned campment? So here's my thinking.
Yeah.
So the SOAR program provides services that we bring to each of those sites. As you mentioned, this whole question of self-governing. Absolutely. Do encampments establish some sorts of governing amongst themselves? Yes, people organize themselves as we do as a society in our housed world. People replicate that in their unhoused community. They create.
Could I ask everyone to mute, please? There's a lot of echo right now, just so we can hear Jackie. Sorry, Jackie.
Okay. So they create structures as, uh, not only physical structures, but community structures within their groups. And the difference between SOAR and a sanctioned encampment is right now, the city is not engaged in those organized structures. We don't, we don't come in, we don't establish rules and guidelines on how the communities function. And, and while we are providing services to the sites, it's much different than our bridge housing communities where we have full assessments with people. We bring all kinds of different services to, to the site. We have a housing goal in terms of their next step. That's part of the plan. We don't do that kind of planning with people who are living in our SOAR sites. We offer as much as we can, but we don't have the level of services. And when a city sanctions it, and the next question that we have brought before the council is, well, what kind of services do you want? And inevitably we've had to bring in security and fencing. All kinds of additional services, uh, and control of the sites that we don't do right now with the SOAR site. And so in my mind, once we start sanctioning, we begin to then ask the question with security, how is the site governed? We have services on site all the time. We have somebody who lives on this place. That's completely different than the SOAR sites. And I would envision if we sanctioned something, you would require us. And we went to a community and we said, this is sanctioned. That's when the community says, okay, well, city, if you're sanctioning this, you have some additional responsibility to ensure the safety of not only us who live outside, but of the residents who live there as well. And that's just not what we're providing, um, in the SOAR sites. So it's, it is a touch, it is, uh, sanitary, it's health. But it's, it, we don't govern, we don't provide security, we don't deal with the day-to-day issues that any community has, uh, just because we're human.
I, I understand.
Add anything else to that little tirade there?
I, I, I got a feeling the Sam's going to cut me off soon, so let me just keep going. Cause we're, we're running out of time here, but, but I appreciate that comment. I guess the reason I was mentioning governed, because it seemed to me that a lot of the advocates put a lot of weight behind the self-governed model. But it seems to me that some of that's already happening, but we know that in, even in, 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 in local government, even when things are organized, things can still be messy. And what I've seen of the self-governed encampments that exist currently, if, if that's what we're going to call them, some of them seem to be in disarray, right? And so I'm, I, I guess I just wanted to put that out there that I'm not sure self-governed model is going to be much better than what we've been seeing. So, so I'll stop there. Let me ask you another question, Jack. And I think I've asked you this before, but I don't remember the answer and this is the reason I'm asking you to get in. The big blue tent for the community, the South Hall that's attached to the convention center, that currently houses upwards of six, about six hundred people or so? Is that more or less?
No.
Two hundred and eighty-five, Councilmember.
How many? I'm sorry.
Three hundred and eighty-five.
Two hundred and eighty-five, okay. So, so the question, the question, and I've never posed this to you Reagan, but, uh, what does that do to close? Can you remind me?
Sure. So, uh, right now we are cleared to use South Hall until the end of June.
Okay. And, and is that tied to any particular timeline as it relates to the workings of the convention center or?
Exactly, Councilmember, it relates to their, um, scheduled for conventions. And we anticipate we could be able to use it even longer than June, but right now they've cleared us through June.
Okay, I, I guess, so that's what I was sort of getting at is, I, I guess I'd like to see to the extent possible for it to be utilized as long as possible, right? I would hate for you all and the folks living there to vacate June and then it sit empty for six months more. Um, and so I don't know if there's any way that that could be tied, uh, as it relates to the programming of the convention center. But if they can, I think that'd be worth a worthwhile thing to look at. I just put that out there.
Yeah, the, the convention center has been very cooperative and allowing us to have access to the site. So to the extent they don't have an active use, they have allowed us to stay. They have been a very good partner.
Okay, wonderful. The other question I had is, uh, is it relates to, um, safe parking. Uh, I understand that V T A, for example, entered into some sort of agreement at East Ridge Mall sometime back. And I don't think it went well or some, something happened. I'm not sure what level of interaction the city had in that situation. But if there, was there any interaction between the city and, and V T A and East Ridge Mall, Reagan or Jackie? During the course of that safe parking for RVs or?
No, that was not.
Okay.
City-funded program.
Okay, alright, so, so I guess what I was curious about is if we were interested, if I was interested in pursuing another safe parking location for RVs in my respective district, what, do we act like today have the resources to get that funded or we need to do something with the budget?
We would need to identify some funding, Councilmember. But if you're able to find an entity that's willing to host a safe parking site and doesn't need financial support, you could do that right now.
Okay, wonderful. So, so the reason I mentioned that is, a- as we know, I think Councilmember Crossbo mentioned it. We all get calls about it daily, uh, and that's the RVs parking all across the streets and things of that nature. Some of the photos that Councilmember Sparsa showed obviously had a lot of RVs there. And so in South San Jose, for example, at the V T L, V T A Santa Teresa Park and Ride Station, it's essentially vacant. And so I'd like to, and I'm not, I'm not sure if it needs to be a part of the motion, but I, I, I want your assistance in approaching V T A to utilize some of that parking for RV parking. Um, and so I'm not sure how you think it's best to approach that. I've already sort of mentioned it to them briefly. I think obviously we need more discussions, but curious about what the process would be.
So I think we could follow up with you on that particular item. It's easier for us to negotiate with another public entity in the past than it has been to negotiate with new.
Okay, I, I appreciate it. And, and so let me just end by just saying, I know there's also been mention of, of community outreach as it relates to sanctioned encampments, as it relates to bridge housing. But I just want to gently remind folks that during the course of the approvals for the bridge housing communities in District Two, there was zero public process. And so, um, I think it's, uh, I, I think there's some room there to move forward in the same type of way we did there. Um, in other parts of the city, if we see, uh, sites that are viable for some of these things that we're, we've been discussing. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
I think that requires, um, public health emergency, but understood. And, but, but your points well taken about the facts, Councilmember Jimenez.
Um, I'm just wondering, is it possible to, uh, call the question?
Yeah, we, we have. You certainly can do so. Uh, if you'd like to make a motion, I know we have more hands up.
Well, I would, I would need to call the question.
Okay, is there a second? There's a second? Uh, let's vote on that.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Uh, no, because I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
Cohen?
Hi.
Crossco?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
No.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Hi.
That's nine yeses.
As, as we did vote, I, I just, uh, it comes from a process. If you want to make a, a follow-up motion, I'm happy to entertain that. But, uh, I think we just ought to go straight to the motions. So why don't we vote on this motion first, uh, from Councilmember Asparza? And I won't recite it unless anyone has a question about it.
And Mayor, yeah, I just have a clarification. So there is some overlap with the Foley Cohen number two and, um, Mayan number three. So those both involve, uh, budget, but I think they should both move forward and they are part of the motion.
Okay. And I assume that those would be referred to the budget process, right? That's where we would.
Yes, and that's the best part of the motion, yes.
Okay, thank you. Still want to even believe in some, I don't know, there's going to be some other way we can allocate money. Alright, uh, then on Councilmember Asparza's motion, unless there are any questions about what it is.
Mayor, you, uh, you, you suggested to make a friendly amendment or you said no?
No, we'll, we'll come back to you for another motion if you'd like to make a follow-up motion.
Sounds good, thanks.
Okay.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
No.
Cohen?
Hi.
Crossco?
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Ricardo?
Hi. Okay, Councilmember Prowls, if you'd like to make a motion that qualifies what we just decided, uh, please do so.
Uh, I'm sorry, to do, to do what? To qualify?
If it qualifies what we just decided, that is if it changes something about what we just decided and you'd like to make a motion.
Oh, sure. Do I have that ability?
I believe so. I just, we, I don't think we can discuss it. I think the motions, the matter's been called, so motions can be made, but I don't think anything more than that.
Can you explain that, Mayor? Point of order.
Yeah, my understanding is the question was called and we voted to call the question. I don't believe that prevents additional motions, but I believe it restricts additional debate. So Councilmember Peralas wanted to make another motion, I want to give him a chance to do so, to have an up or down vote.
Okay, so we voted to call the question and then the motion is on the table. We voted to pass the motion and so now there's another motion?
Well, we already approved your motion, I believe, did we not?
Right, so that's why.
Yeah.
I'm asking why there's another motion, just for clarity.
Because we, we haven't called the next item yet and there can be two motions. If there's still some, uh, some matter that's not yet decided.
Okay.
I understand.
Yeah, I get that too. Uh, I, I appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, I was confused myself. So the, the item that was not included in the last motion, and I did hear a number of my colleagues say they would be willing to support at least exploring sanctioned encampments. So I would, I would like to, uh, include that, um, in addition to the directions from, from the last motion, which would essentially be including, uh, my memo from, um, get the, the date. Excuse me, the March nineteenth.
Okay, the notions from Councilmember Prowls. Uh, is there a second? Okay, that motion. Oh, there was a second from.
Carrasco.
I'm sorry, from Councilmember Carrasco. Alright.
And is there, is there discussion now on this motion, Mayor? Cause I'd love to.
I, that's a good question. Nor, are we allowed to discuss it?
I'm at a, I lost power and I'm at a friend's house right now, um, without my, without my Robert's Rules of Order. So, um, I can, I can look something up, but it, but this is a separate motion. And so you called the question on the prior motion. I think you can have some discussion on this, on this.
Alright, given the very lateness of the hour, I'm going to urge strongly all my colleagues, keep their comments to one minute or less, because we got two more items to discuss tonight. Councilor Prowls, would you consider, consider some constraints on city staff time? At least until, uh, there is a very clear consensus by the council member and county and anybody else that that's a site that we're going to move forward with.
Yeah, I, I don't want staff to be spinning their wheels, wasting their time either. And as I said, I have a site that, that I believe could actually function, um, in partnership with the county. I think we heard from our colleagues that there, there, there may be a willingness to explore some other sites across the city. And then, uh, and then I'd love to have a minute as well. I could limit my comments to just sort of advocate why I think this is important to support. But I, I would be willing to support that, that notion as you just suggested.
Okay, go ahead and proceed with your comments and then we'll go to Councilmember Arenas, I think had her hand up.
Okay.
She's taking it down.
So the, the motion that we just passed, moving forward with that, for instance, we have a site, uh, at the Guadalupe River Parkway with an estimated three hundred people living there. If we move forward with what we just passed and we don't identify other locations, whether it's sanctioned encampment or, or additional SOAR sites, uh, the FAA has requested that we, we shut that down and we've had to have a plan set up to do so. So within a year, uh, or so, we will be shutting that down regardless and there'll be three hundred people without anywhere else to go. As Councilmember Jimenez just mentioned, the South Hall tent, I can guarantee you, uh, the convention center, as they begin to reopen, uh, we're looking at within a year, maybe a little longer as well, another several hundred people with nowhere to go if we don't identify other locations. So that's my concern, uh, without identifying these other locations. And, uh, and I feel that it's extremely important, uh, that we put an effort in to identify, uh, additional locations. Again, be them SOAR sites or sanctioned encampments. And that's why I'm asking my colleagues to, uh, to support this.
Okay. Councilmember, can you pull your hand down? Did you?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry, it, I don't know how my hand went down. Um, I, I just wanted a, a clarification, I apologize. I don't know if it's because it's so late, but could you, could you, um, uh, repeat your motion, uh, Councilwoman Prowls?
It's essentially just my memo from March, uh, nineteenth.
What, i- i- in which you focus on, on just that site that, that you and Supervisor, um, Chavez have been discussing, is that what it is? I'm sorry.
No, no, it's essentially opening up the opportunity for temporary sanctioned encampments. Not just that one, I am suggesting, and I think our colleagues have said that they would, you know, some, some have suggested they'd be willing to maybe identify some sites in their districts as well. So it would allow us that opportunity because that was not included in Councilmember Asparza's motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilperson Asparza?
Yeah, I have a question for, um, staff. So on a sanctioned encampment, do.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. So on a sanctioned encampment, do, do you have a policy for citing it and for the level, the definition of it and the level of the city supporting it?
We do not. So we do have a citing policy for our bridge housing communities, where we talked about how far distances that we would go for from schools and residential. So we would have to build off of that policy.
And do you have a coordinated operations and safety plan, an idea of what the budgetary impacts would be, an implementation plan, and a possible site closure plan?
My guess is we would have to come back to you all to say, again, what kind of level of services is your expectation for a sanctioned encampment? And that will drive the budget.
Yeah, I, I just, I can't support the motion. There's a reason why it wasn't included in, in the motion, because if this were just the site in District Three, the Council, Councilmember Peralas is talking to Supervisor Chavez on, that could be something that we could move forward in both the city and the county's budget process and to jointly do that. But the motion actually in my spreadsheet is to immediately identify temporary sanction encampment locations on publicly owned sites. Citywide, again, I think we're back to where we started, where the mayor asked who, who would like to offer a specific site in their district? And then we start diverting money that we're using to house people now. So I can't support the motion as it's put forward. Again, if it were just the site in District Three that Councilmember Peralas is discussing, then I could support exploring that and moving forward, but it just doesn't make sense to do this citywide and divert our resources to this at this point in time. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? I'm very sympathetic to Councilmember Asparza's points. I will say I'm very tentatively willing to support this only. This is a very low-touch effort from staff, because we've got way too much that staff has got to be involved in on important housing projects that'll get people actually housed. And I just, I know what it costs in San Francisco. It's more than $60,000 per space for an individual in a sanctioned encampment, which is way too much money to be spending on people sleeping outside. We should be spending that money getting people housed. So I, I would want to see an extremely low-touch effort from staff, if this was going to work, or else much rather be spending the resources on getting people housed. Other comments? All right, let's vote on Councilmember Peralas's motion.
Jimenez?
Sorry.
Yes.
Peralas?
I think, I don't know if Councilmember Mahan wanted to say something. I saw his hand go up.
It's okay. I may have missed my opportunity. That's okay.
Okay. Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Carrasco?
Hi.
Davis?
No.
Asparza?
No.
I'm going to share the vote, just so you guys can see it. Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Liccardo?
Hi. All right, we're, we're moving on to 8.3, which is also Jackie's, I believe, Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Reagan and Michelle.
Reagan, thank you.
Good evening. Given the lateness of that hour, we're happy to skip the staff presentation and go directly to discussion and questions.
Okay, given the very late hour, which we are 11:15, I'm going to further constrain public comment on this item to one minute. Anil Bhabar?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Anil Bhabar, on behalf of the California Apartment Association. I would just like to thank the city for their efforts, especially Michelle McGurk, for their outreach and for partnering with the California Apartment Association to educate property owners on the rental relief program. CA is committed to assisting the state, the county, and the city in an effective rollout of this much-needed program. Owners and residents have struggled over the past year, the weather, this pandemic, and rental housing providers have gone the extra mile to assist their tenants, but the rental relief funds will help continue this effort while providing property owners with vital funds to operate their buildings and pay their mortgage. CA will continue to work with the county and city to schedule a webinar to assist property owners in understanding how the program works. And our goal is to inform the applicants on how to apply for these funds and focus the application to the appropriate body. Thank you again, and good night.
Thank you. Blair Beekman?
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. Those are really nice words from the previous speaker. When I mentioned earlier, you know, we have advocacy at the state and federal level, you know, in our, you know, elected officials like Askara and the previous speaker, who are, you know, working for, you know, a process to be helpful, you know, to all sides. And it's a lot to learn. I hope we're learning those lessons with rent forgiveness ideas for both owners and tenants. And from there, you know, we have to really start to consider the subsidy process for other programs for the future of San Jose. And we have to find different ways to talk about those programs openly and candidly, I feel. And I'm a little strong with that effort. I hope we can do that. And just have all our options available to us to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Wascar Castro?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Wascar Castro, Working Partnerships, here to provide comments and to applaud council staff and all nonprofit partners involved in moving forward with this local rental assistance program. We're very appreciative that council chose to move forward with a hybrid model to have a local program to administer treasury funds, which are not required to, but by certain requirements under SB 91, our renters throughout San Jose are in desperate need of assistance. And while now there is the opportunity to apply with the state program, this local program really does a great job in prioritizing lower-income residents as well as tenants with sensitive relationships with their landlords. So in conclusion, we'd like to thank all folks involved and look forward to robust outreach and making sure that residents of all different neighborhoods are getting connected to these relief opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Catherine Hedges?
She's our last speaker.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Liccardo, Vice Mayor, RST, Council Housing. Yes, I want to echo what the other speakers have said. I'm very glad that the city is providing renters and using the hybrid model and I, I'm so glad that we can avert the disaster with even more people becoming homeless if we hadn't taken those steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, returning to council. Councilmember Asparza?
Um, I think I had my hand up from before.
Okay, Councilmember Foley?
Okay, then I just have a couple of items on this. I know the hour is late. Specifically regarding mobile home owners, I see that they are allowed to benefit from the rental program. So that's wonderful. Michelle, do you have an idea how that will be rolled out to them? How you will notify them?
Um, yes, we are working with the housing department staff, because it's an audience that we do have databases and we plan to do a postcard. That, as we've done with some of the other programs and let them know, they are actually a great audience for the state, because the park owners can apply directly to, to the state program for, on behalf of tenants, and they can batch them when they apply. So we know that they all have lease agreements. So we'll be reaching out both to the, the actual mobile homeowners and to the park owners.
Okay, wonderful. And will this, I am concerned about the extra work that this, that will be involved. Will this, housing will be able to accommodate this and it's, I understand, that was a rhetorical question perhaps.
It is perhaps rhetorical. Jackie can weigh in on this. It's a huge lift and we're currently running it with a team out of the EOC in coordination with housing.
Correct. So, you know, we, we, we already oversee through our rent stabilization program. Mobile home owners are required to register with the city. And so it's just a function that we're already set up to do.
Okay, great. And also I wanted to offer, or I committed anyway, to the, Realtors have these marketing meetings three or four times a week, and the subject came up of the rental assistance a couple of months ago. And they kind of had the information all wrong, but they would be very interested in having someone come and speak with them on how this is being implemented. So who should I connect them with, Michelle?
Um, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
In the near term.
Okay, very good. And, and with that, I will move approval of item 8.3. Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember. I want to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this effort, including Reagan Henninger and Lee Wilcox, Michelle McGurk, and many others, and Jim Shannon, I believe, also on the budget side. All right, any other comments? All right, let's, Councilmember.
Yeah.
Asparza?
Yeah, I had my hand up. I'm having technical issues.
Got it.
Yeah, I just had a question on, and I may have missed it because I had technical issues, Michelle. So are, how are we working closely with the state on HMIS coordination? Did you cover that? I apologize if you did.
No, I didn't. And we are actually still working with them. So today's action gives us the authority to enter into the MOU. Our partners are having very technical conversations with them and their technical staff, but they have a, the good thing is their program includes a data sharing component. So people agree that their information can be shared with the local agencies when they participate in the state program. So it's, it's all being worked out and it should, it should go pretty well. We've had very positive conversations, us and the county, with the state.
Okay. And is there a possibility to add case management funding to this?
We have, I think the next item, there is some case management funding in the CDBG budget that's before you. Case management is a big piece of it. We just found out one partner that is one of the state's partners is only getting enough funding for one case manager for the entire, and so we're really concerned that both the 10% admin costs that are allocated by the federal government for this tranche of funding is not going to provide enough for case management for, you know, because the families that we served last year really took a lot of handholding to get through a process that was much simpler.
Yeah, and I also believe, didn't about 25% of folks not even have access to the internet, correct?
Yeah, so we're, we're having a lot of conversations internally about things that we can do. I don't want to sort of get ahead of some of the processes that are going on within, you know, as we look at recovery operations, but ensuring that all of these federal programs that are coming online are accessible to our residents is, is something that quite honestly, Councilmember, keeps me up at night.
Thank you, Michelle. I think that's no small thing, because, again, we have the data from the last round and the state is unfortunately making this really difficult. And then you add the 10% versus the 15% issue with the federal government, and a lot of our most vulnerable tenants are being left out. Well, thank you. Thank you for stepping up. Thanks. And figuring it out. I know there's a lot to figure out on this. So thank you and thanks to all the partners for doing that. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to get some, a little bit of clarity on, and once again, I'm going to sing my praises for our housing department. You also included our sexual assault, along with our domestic violence nonprofits that serve this particular population. When we requested it, when I requested it, I don't know, last year, I think it was. And I wanted to know if there is, you know, how that was going and how the collaboration with some of these gender-based violence groups were going, how you think that they're going to be integrated into this emergency rental assistance?
That one. I will say our, our domestic violence service providers were really a valuable addition to our homeless prevention network and a natural partner. I, I'm making an assumption that they'll be part of this next phase of, of efforts, but I think that's right, because I see Michelle nodding, so.
Yeah, and one piece that is good news, Councilmember, is that the, the most recent FAQs from the federal government have expanded how we can use these funds. And so things that might help a family that is seeking to leave a domestic violence situation are much more clearly eligible with the new guidelines from the Biden administration. So for example, if somebody needs to be housed in a motel as they're transitioning, or they are needing down payment assistance, that is critical. And then Erin Stanton from Sacred Heart just texted me and said, and wanted me to reassure you that, yes, our domestic violence providers are part of the homelessness prevention system, and they are key partners in this work.
Wonderful. And I'm, I'm going to assume that also is sexual assault, because they're all, there's an intersectionality here. And, you know, I hate to call it out, or split hairs here, but sometimes our, you know, our survivors, they either come through because of sexual assault, or they come through because of intimate partner violence. And, and there's some distinguishment in terms of how they, they arrived there, although we know that there might be an intersectionality that, that, that that is hidden. So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. I hope that we can continue to do that and then move in the direction of integrating with, and this is something, you know, that I had already shared with you, Michelle, and that's that we have a Child Advocacy Center that's opening real soon. And a lot of those children, unfortunately, because not only our research, but our statistics show that they typically know they're perpetrator of sexual abuse, and they might benefit from some rental assistance so that they can relocate because of that, that crime that's been perpetuated against them, that those folks might be living in the same household. And so, so anyways, I, I hope that we can continue to connect. perpetuated against them, that those folks might be living in the same household. And so, so anyways, I, I hope that we can continue to connect all of the good work that our police department is doing within this, uh, within our department and with the county, in collaboration with our county, and then with what we're doing with rental assistance. And so it, it's, it's a comprehensive, um, uh, system that, that answers the call, not only to, uh, the folks who typically will pick up the phone and ask for the assistance, but those folks who may not know that there is this service that they um, may find very crucial, um, during some very tragic moments that can allow them to leave where they're living so that they can find some, uh, safety for their children. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, any other comments? All right, let's vote.
Menas?
Yes.
Corales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Crossco?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Lee?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Licardo?
Hi. Okay, with 28 minutes to go, we have, uh, the last item, uh, which, uh, is also, of course, housing-related substantial amendment to the annual action plan for HUD. Uh, there, is there a presentation on this one, Jackie?
There is not, but Reagan is going to just read into the record changes.
Yes, that's right. Got it.
I'm just gonna pull them up on my screen so that we can all follow along. Okay. So the agenda language that we are correcting, recommend, delete recommendation B one thirteen that reads, increase C D B G cares round one grant administration by two hundred sixty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-one. We are amending recommendation B one fourteen to read decrease the general homelessness category in C D B G C V one by one million four hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty to redirect to other programs.
Other programs.
And finally,
Finally.
approve, perbing changes relating to the amendment to the, to the year twenty twenty-one. Plan to one, reduce the overall federal C D B G grant allocation by one thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars per the HUD agreement and reduce the overall federal home grant allocation by seven hundred and sixty-five dollars per the HUD agreement. And with that, we're happy to take any questions or comments.
Move approval?
Second. Okay, I believe that was from Councilmember Sparsa, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
Going to the public for public comment, Mr. Beekman?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, can someone, uh,
Someone, uh,
help this, uh, repeat.
Uh, repeat.
Effect.
Effect. Speaking, and I'm sorry. I, I couldn't understand the question.
There's a reef, reef effect going on, but.
Mayor, I think the echo is coming from your end.
I, I, I can't turn on a mute at the same time that I'm asking people to speak, but I'll, I'll do my best.
Okay, can I? Hi, can you hear me?
Can't talk to you, Mr. Beekman, if I had mute on, so please stop.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will go. Hopefully, I, I'm being heard right now. Um, someone can correct me otherwise. I, I wanted to quickly offer in, with this being HUD, uh, issues around COVID, uh, I just wanted to clarify that advocacy from our, uh, state elected officials and federal officials at this time, again, they, to clarify, they understand the concepts of, uh, what we're in right now and that part of their advocacy is the ideas that, you know, COVID is not the fault of everyday people, and they're advocating to, to help people with that. We're all better understanding, uh, you know, our rent forgiveness ideas at this time. Thank you. And, uh, it's a way that we won't have to hurt each other. I'm curious for myself what will be our next steps in our lives of COVID, how, how to progress and move forward in our thinking and our ideas. And I'll be interested how that can work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geary.
Yeah, love me, Gary.
Love me, Gary.
I, I'm getting an echo.
I'm getting an echo, too.
All right, so, uh,
So, uh,
I'm just gonna say that I, I think it's, uh, I didn't really understand why money's being taken away from the, the homeless, uh, allocations. Uh, we've got, we just talked about how serious this problem is and, and yet we're still taking money away from that, uh, that particular category. And I might be missing something. It's certainly possible that I don't understand something, but it's just really odd to me that while we're talking about how serious this problem is, at the same time, we're also talking about taking money away from that, uh, from that particular category. So I'm, I'm just gonna end it right there because again, if somebody can explain to me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shagira. I, I'm not sure I understand exactly the concern, but I don't believe we're taking any money from homeless funding. Uh, Reagan, did you want to respond in any way?
Sure.
Sure, we're not.
Think you have to mute.
You have to mute, mayor.
We're not, uh, taking any way, taking away any homeless funding, simply just, um, shifting some money around amongst sources.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, uh, Councilmember Ranch, I know you have a memorandum. Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, the, uh, there's a motion that's already been made, but I'm going to ask for a amendment since that might. Except.
Except.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Except, uh, Councilmember Ranch's memorandum in the motion. Uh, that was accepted by the maker, and I assume that's okay with the secondor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, is there any comment before we vote? All right, let's vote then.
Menas?
Yes.
Corales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Crossco?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Licardo?
All right, that completes our agenda. We'll go to, uh, public forum at this time, and maybe somebody can explain to me why I get an echo if I don't only have one device on. Let me figure that out. Because I don't know how I can talk with the mute on, but anyway, okay, uh, go to public comment. Mr. Beekman?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Oh, it's repeating again.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, no, it's still repeating.
Still repeating.
Please proceed. I don't have a choice, so go ahead.
Um, um, can I have my, uh, time put back for one minute? Can someone mute themselves else? Someone mutes themselves, may need to do that. Okay, it's, it's going, uh, it's, it's good now. Thank you. I just wanted to quickly, uh, offer, it was a good meeting today. You know, thanks for the group who spoke up about, uh, you know, their issues, uh, within, uh, um, you know, east side issues to get, I guess, about how, how they can, uh, take care of themselves uh, as young people, and, uh, I hope you can offer them some help. And, you know, the, the work that I'm doing with accountability, with technology and open public policy, I mean, it's really hopeful stuff for teenagers who are possibly not feeling good, or people like myself are not feeling good. And it gives a little hope to the process, uh, you know, the, the gunman situation that's going on, uh, this martyrdom system isn't so great. And I, I suggest the, the open public policy ideas as a way to relieve the tension and what can be really good about our future. Thank you.
Hi, the next speaker is Indrajit Sidhu.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Indrajit. I am calling regarding the audience pause, uh, three dollars pay you guys, including franchises also. We are not a part of corporation. We are a, uh, individual franchisee business owner with our own tax ID and we pay our employees from our bank account. I don't know how come you guys, including us, in a corporation, we not even a food store. We are a convenience store. And I want you to be exclude us from that audience. We cannot afford that one. We hardly open our doors and we are living on PPP loan. And I don't know why San Jose City is including Seven-Eleven's franchisee inside without even letting us know. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Roland Lebrun.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to second the kind comment that Mayor Ricardo made about Kim Molisch's eighteen years, for eighteen years of service earlier. During orders of the day by the mayor low of my hand, so here I am ten hours later. Uh, the only thing I would add is that Kim would make such a wonderful mayor if she elected to run because she would bring the breath of fresh air that our city so desperately needs. Uh, the last thing I'd like to do is to give a huge shout out to, uh, council members, um, Jimenez. A courageous consideration of the twelve hundred parking spaces of the Santa Teresa Latreel parking lot for overnight parking. Thank you and good night.
Robert Agiri?
Robert Agiri, uh, I'd like to again push forward the idea that we have, uh, representation of the unhoused community to, uh, be able to review any rules or any, anything that's going to be affecting them. Uh, we're making decisions every day. Uh, we, we made a lot of them today regarding unhoused people and, uh, without advocates coming to the table to, uh, advocate for them, they, they don't really have a real voice, and I think that that's something that we need to look at. Uh, I think also within, uh, municipality, we need to understand how uh, criminalization of the unhoused people just continues to kick them back into the street and makes things worse. We criminalize people and then wonder why they act like criminals. Well, I mean, it's pretty obvious what's going on. Um, I also would like to say that, uh, I, I don't want to talk about sanctioning encampments because that was on the agenda, but the idea uh, has been something that I have been promoting for many, many years now. And I, I think there's enough expertise in the area that we're not tapping into, and I count myself as one of those. Please contact me about that.
Paul Edwards?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'd also like to, uh, bring up the sanctioned encampments as well. I think that, uh, it's labeled, you can call it transition encampment. You don't have to provide security. This is something that these people, they, they don't want to be confined. They don't want rules. It, it, it's a baby steps for them. They go straight from the streets. They can go into a sanctioned encampment or a transitioning one if you feel like that obligates you to something. Um, you, you don't have to control the entire situation. And the idea, I think, uh, of self-government is gu- governance is related to the concept of they can build something for themselves and feel proud about it. Um, last statement is, is I don't feel like Reagan's, uh, explanation regarding, uh, the transfer of funds was really adequate. I'll have a look at that later. Maybe I'm missing something too, but it clearly said transfer from homeless to other projects.
Shashi Sharma? Shashi Sharma, go ahead. Okay, the next speaker is Paul Dinza. Paul? You are very quiet.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Um, I'm a Seven-Eleven franchisee. I'm calling regarding, um, ordinance uh, that was passed to, uh, it's ordinance, ordinance number three zero five three four regarding three dollar hazard pay. And, uh, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding, was it city council's intentions to include us in this mandate? Because we are independent contractors and we do not have three hundred employees. I have total of ten employees, part-time and full-time. And this will raise our expenses by about fifteen hundred per week, which I cannot afford. And Seven-Eleven takes most of, uh, they take about fifty-four percent. And in most cases, our take-home is way less than private mom-and-pop schools. We are no different than small business owners and have our individual tax ID. I'm having a really hard time understanding how the city of San Jose can include us in this mandate. Please amend us and, uh, you know, exclude this, uh, exclude us from this mandate.
Hey, Mayor, this is, uh, Sergio. Can I, can I say something real quick, uh, related to some of the speakers from Seven-Eleven?
Um, the mayor is gone. Tony City Clerk, um, I would, I would say, Nora might be able to answer that question.
Yeah.
Go, go ahead, Sergio.
Okay, for, for, for all the folks hopefully still on the line calling from Seven-Eleven, we've been fielding a lot of phone calls about the hazard pay and whether it applied to you all. I can tell you that the, uh, the intention was it, for it to not apply to you all, and that we've been in contact with the city attorney to try to figure out what needs to be done in order to clarify that. So just for everyone on here calling from Seven-Eleven, just want to let you know that.
Thank you. Uh, so Anne?
Hi, I, I'm calling in regards to, for Seven-Eleven. Um, it, it's just unbelievable how we got put on there. Most of our stores are ready to turn their keys back in because they made hardly any money. If your employee makes, takes more money home than the franchisee, it's pretty bad. Um, our stores are knee-high in loans and, uh, the loans, we can't even get an S B A loan. So please exempt us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandi.
Hi, my name is Abiraj Mohar. I'm actually using my father's laptop. His name is Mandi. He is, uh, also a Seven-Eleven franchisee owner. Um, I'm also here just, uh, expressing my concerns regarding this ordinance. Um, I just want to put out there, I understand that the city council is taking action on this. However, I believe that, you know, being the city council for such a great city like San Jose, we should be more prepared for things like this in the future and not including franchisees or making sure that we're communicating with franchisees about concerns like this. Um, I think it's just a little disconcerting that our, uh, franchisees had to come here, make public comments, take time on eleven forty-nine P M on a, you know, weeknight. So just in the future, it'd be great if the city council could be more organized about this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dee.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Hi, I'd like to say thank you. And first of all, I'm a franchisee of Seven-Eleven also, and I would like to just say that three dollars increase for this hazard pay, I mean, we're already losing fifty percent of our sales daily and taking loans out and taking the steps just to survive is, I mean, we're just basically digging ourselves in a bigger hole. So, I mean, if we can get this off the ballot, just, you know, consider us, we're small businesses. We have our own personal E I N number, our own tax number. So let's get the right information into the hands that people can get this done and over with so we can actually gain something out of this pandemic because we're all hurting and we don't know how to survive. We're taking every single precaution, every single step that we can as a business owner. And as being a small business owner, there's not a lot of ways to go and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Shashi?
Yes, you know, I'm a Seven-Eleven franchisee too, so I have a same scenario. I have two store, ten employees.
The separate EIN number from 7-Eleven. We are doing very, very bad in the stores for last year and a half. And I think we should not be burdened with this three dollar pay. And this ordinance was for the employer who have 300 employees. And we hardly have 10 employees over there and, uh, we are told by our franchisee that we have to make that, uh, payment to our employees. So we want. You guys to help us to clarify this thing so that we are not burdened with this thing. If that happened, we will go out of business, you know? You talk about this, uh, you know, all the situation due to this pandemic, you know? We are this in the same situation that we have heard by this very badly. So we need your help to reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the, uh, last public comment, so the meeting is adjourned.